Just tell me when.
You're good to go.
Good to go?
Yep.
Welcome to the October 23rd, 2025 Planning Board of the Town of Southampton. Call to order, please, Florian?
Chair LaFaro.
I'm in a call to order. You know what I mean.
Yes, I do. Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Mutu is absent. Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
Board Member Glazer.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any minutes, Florian?
Yes, we do. September 25 and October 9.
October 9. Motion to accept.
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor. Close of sentence, six in favor and one absent. So let's go right into the Town Board referrals with Julie Green.
Come.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. See you.
See you all. So we're going to start with the Austin Tuttle House.
Sure.
Just a one page. And forgive me for maybe not knowing the protocol, so not sending you anything early or ahead of time. Going forward, we can change that, so.
Let's hope we have a lot more, Julie.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks that way.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Good.
Is this right, Julie? Is that where it was?
No, that's the, oh, that's the Tuttle, yes.
Yep.
That's the Tuttle.
Good.
Okay. You're on, Julie. Just give us your name for the record, please.
Julie Green, Southampton Town Historian. So this property is identified as one of 98 historic resources in Remsenberg in the Southampton Historic Resources Survey that was done by the AKRF in 2014. And it's also identified in the historical profiles of the Eastport-Speonk-Remsenberg-West Hampton Report from 2004. The house sits on an acre and a 1.2 acre parcel and is located on the west side of South Country Road adjoining Remsenberg Lane, Remson Lane in the historic area of Remsenberg. It sits prominently on the historic South Country Road in Speonk, now Remsenberg, that was the early post and stage route connecting communities such as Sea Tuck and Waterville, which are now Eastport to the west.
Stagecoach.
And.
Stagecoach.
And to the east settlements at Union Place in Beaver Down, which is now West Hampton. Historic survey of the property was prepared by Landmarks and Historic District Board Members Stephanie Davis and William Hine. The Landmarks and Historic District Board have found that the house at 149 South Country Road, Remsenberg, is worthy of Town Landmark designation as it meets three of the five criteria. So the first criteria is A, which is to possess special character or historic or aesthetic interest of value as part of the cultural, political, economic, and social history of the locality, region, state, or nation. So via its association with five generations of the Tuttle family, it meets those requirements. The Tuttles were one of the first families who settled Remsenberg and the Speonk area, and the house was built in 1820.
It's pretty. Is that directly opposite the post office?
No, it's, it's, so the academy is a little bit across the street and then it's right, it's toward the western end, it's right on that very large curve. So the view and the vista of this house has been there for 200-plus years. And it's quite lovely. It's right there in the, so it's on that, that curve. The second criteria that it, that it meets is the historic personages. So this is one of the later, the personages is Willis B. Tuttle, and he was one of the later owners of the family. But he was a well-known correspondent for the Brooklyn Daily Eagle, the Riverhead News Review, and the New York Tribune, and as an editor for the West Hampton Press, starting in 1930, which later became known as the Hampton Chronicle, which no longer exists, which turned into the Express Group Southampton Press. So in addition to his newspaper work, Willis Tuttle was a charter member of the Remsenberg Association, which was formed in 1946, an elder of the Presbyterian Church, and a member of the War Memorial Committee responsible for the installation of Remsenberg's War Memorial in 1948. As the town historian, he's one of those people that I run into all the time doing newspaper database searches. So because he chronicled the goings-on of Remsenberg and Speonk, he's a very important person. So he fits that criteria quite nicely. And being from this Tuttle family also embodies that criteria. So, and the third criteria, of course, is the architectural type. This building was built around 1820. We're calling it the Austin Tuttle House because that was the gentleman that lived in it for most of his time. It's probably, has been worked on over the years and added to. But those things have been done, and those additions and things are considered historic. So it's a beautiful.
Beautiful.
Vista, but it's a beautiful home. Yeah, and those are the, so the Tuttle family. So it is a distinctive side gable colonial revival-style dwelling. It retains much of its historic building fabric and has an exterior appearance that remained relatively unchanged for at least the last 50 years. As with most of our historic structures throughout the town, as I mentioned, the evolution of this house comprises earlier parts and remodel during the first half, the 20th century.
Is someone living in the house now?
Yes. Yes, the owner is the applicant.
Okay.
For the landmarking.
What acreage does it have?
1.2.
And that comes with, as part of the package?
Yeah, the whole, the whole, it's kind of on a corner. It's on Little Remson Lane, which would have been kind of a driveway for the Tuttle family. And just down the lane a little is a historic burying ground that we take care of, that the Remsenberg Association takes care of. And most of the Tuttles are, quite a few of the Tuttles are buried there.
Buried there. Someone for Remsen too.
Yeah, there's such a tie, a tie-in with all of Remsenberg for them. So, any questions?
I think we support this.
Resolution of support?
Absolutely.
So we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Yeah. Motion by Florian, second by Kate, all in favor. Close of sentence, six in favor, one absent, and full support. And the next one is the Herman Ellsworth.
Terrell House.
Do this again?
Julie, do you want to keep these based by?
Sure.
Just another one.
I'm going to keep it because I have a Tuttle friend.
Really? Oh, good.
I like hearing the Tuttles are still around. So the next house that, for landmark designation, is what we're referring to as the Herman Ellsworth House. So this received historic designation application for landmark at the property. It's at 11 Walnut Avenue in East Quogue by the current owner. And the historic survey of the property was prepared again by Landmarks and Historic Board Members Stephanie Davis and William Hine. The Landmarks and Historic District Board has found that the house at 11 Walnut East Quogue is worthy of Town Landmark designation because it meets one of the five criteria in the town. And I also could argue that it meets the percentage to the Terrell family. We're largely involved in civic duties throughout their time here. So just to talk about the house a little bit. It's, so it meets the criteria C, which embodies the distinguishing characters of an architect, architectural type, period or style, or contains elements of design, details, material, or craftsmanship which represent significant innovation. As it is a distinctive two-story front gable, Queen Anne-style dwelling with hip roof, built around the turn of the 20th century, and we've since learned that it was built in probably about 1892, which is a very significant period at the turn of the 20th century for this style home, and it embodies it beautifully. It has, it retains, it's relatively unchanged since it was built in 1892, and it retains much of its historical building fabric. Two-over-two light double-hung sash windows, a central brick chimney, wood shingled cladding, and a wraparound porch with square posts. It has an exterior appearance that has remained relatively unchanged for the better part of its history. So just a little history on the Terrells. So this was built in 1892 by Herman Ellsworth Terrell and his family on land owned by Charles Bishop. Walnut Avenue, did I say Avenue? Yeah, Walnut Avenue had been laid out just prior to the sale of the land, and it was because it went to the East Quogue Field Club, which no longer is in existence, but at that time, so this is right off of Main Street in East Quogue, and that was the road to get to the East Quogue Field Club. And so Herman Terrell worked as a mason for his father, Richard Skyler Terrell. They had a family construction company, and they're well-known for building many, many summer cottages in Quogue and West Hampton Beach and East Quogue. A lot of these large Victorian homes on the western part of town are all built by them. And he was the mason, so he was integral, the base of the whole operation, so to speak. And also interesting to note that Herman Terrell was appointed the seventh man. You all know we're working on the Tiana Life Saving Station. So we're doing a lot of digging about the lifesavers that were here as our first responders. And he was a first responder. He was the seventh man of the Southampton Life Saving Station to fill a vacancy in December of 1897. He's considered the Winter Man, which was, of course, the roughest period to rescue people from shipwrecks. At the time of his death in 1920, he continued in his masonry field in construction. And also the Terrells, so just west of the Tiana Life Saving Station was at the Terrell Bathing House. So I'm sure he worked there in some capacity as well. That was all wiped out in the Hurricane of '38. And also, interesting to note that Irving Downs was the second homeowner and was born and bred in East Quogue, and for eight years served as the Southampton Tax Assessor and Receiver. And his wife, Annabie Downs, sold the property in 1959.
I love the chewy box on the front door.
Yeah, chewy.
They pet, they have a pet.
When they designate these houses for landmark, do they make any provisions for landscaping? Do they put limitations on what can be planted out front?
Put limitations on heights of shrubbery.
Is that part of the landmark?
Sometimes it can be part of, you know, so that we have visibility from right of way.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that a standard?
It gets, it gets more, if these people are seeking historic facadesments, so those are a little bit, you know, stricter in the, for facadesments. Written, you know, no higher than four feet, you know, that type of thing. No shrubbery up against the house.
If the future owner couldn't come and plant, you know?
No, no, no. Yeah.
Okay.
And all the maintenance remains private with the?
Yes. Yeah, this is, this is just to gain status that one would need for certain grants.
Right, okay.
Are the current property owners related to the Terrells? Or no? No. Okay.
Motion to accept this? By Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor. Close of sentence, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Julie. And for everything you do.
Julie, here you go. Give us some extra. Thank you. If we're going to close.
The regular session and go into a work session with Anthony and 310 Montauk Highway. Hello.
How are you?
That better, Seth?
Hey, thanks. Please identify yourself for the record.
Alec Kociski from Bowler Engineering, 275 Broad Halloue Road, Melville, New York.
Just by your last name.
K-O-C-I-S-K-I.
And Bowler. That's B-O-H-L-E.
Yep. Perfect.
Hi, and Zach Antoletti, 41 Meeting House Lane, Southampton, New York, 11968 Council for the.
I figured I'd make this easier by making 11 by 17s. A big plan.
Large foldouts.
Yeah.
But we now have an easel.
I made smaller copies just so they can flip through it.
I don't know if I need more.
Can you double up? Yeah, there we go. You want to pass one?
We have another one, we have another one here next to the lawyer.
Yes, same.
All the same?
They're all the same. Yeah, they're all stapled together, there's three exhibits.
Anthony, here's one for you.
We have an extra two. Do you need one down there?
Oh, gosh.
Did you pass that?
Thank you. I just figured instead of the big plan.
Okay. Anthony?
Yeah, I'm going to let them do this, but, you know, we, this is a property, on Montauk Highway in Shinnecock Hills. It is in the 20 zoning district. The fronts on Montauk Highway, and you can see back here from the subdivision, Lilian Lane. We actually did a pre-application on this that involved a lot line modification of the two lots here at the end of the cul-de-sac that would result in this property getting some frontage on Lilian Court. But that was the extent of it, because obviously access on Montauk Highway is undesirable. That sort of never went anywhere beyond the pre-application. And then I met with the gentleman here on a potential subdivision. I wanted them to present it to you, which I think is in the packet that.
Sheet. Yield map, we do.
We don't have to worry about yields right now.
So the third page would be the final map.
Anthony, what's the road that Lilian Lane comes out to?
Middle Pond.
Middle, yeah. Yes, I was thinking the third page. I don't know why I was saying yes. Yes, that's right. Yeah.
So, you know, what they're looking to do now is, and there is a yield map in there, I think, that shows.
A yield of four.
Well, the yield that the proposal is, is a yield of four. I mean, the map subdivision design is four. I think they're showing six.
So we want to propose four lots.
I don't have that here. Do you have two maps?
So page two.
Okay, no, I got it, I got it.
Has, if we were to divide this into 20,000 square foot lots, we would yield, I believe, six with the road. Our proposed application is to propose four lots at about 40,000 square feet per lot. So bigger properties, less lots.
And then there are two houses existing?
Yeah, so those currently are not part of our property. What would have to happen, sorry, Anthony, I'm stealing here. Ariel, just to show Florian, the property in question isn't here. It's hard to see red. The two lots you're looking at are the two at the end of this cul-de-sac. They're different properties.
Yeah.
Correct. So previously in this application, what transpired, and you could kind of almost see in that plan, was that the property to the east side, we'd have a series of land swaps. So what would happen is we would provide the property to the east with some additional land, which you get out, they already built into, as you can see, on the eastern side. So that neighbor already built into the property that was agreed upon many years ago. And with the property to the west, we would also provide more land to the back as attached in the plan, and they would provide us access to Lilian Lane. So there'd be a series of land swaps with the two neighbors that was agreed upon way back when that would allow us to get access off Lilian Court, so.
Are you not south of Montauk Highway?
We are on, yes. We're currently south of Montauk. So right now, we currently are front-facing along Montauk Highway, as Anthony had mentioned, which is non-desirable. So what our intent is to do is to connect to Lilian Lane. And the only way to do that is through a series of land swaps with the neighbors, which was agreed upon.
Yeah, I was just confused when you were talking about the east and west neighbors.
Yeah, so it was, so this, this house right here, as you can see, they're rebuilt into what was discussed. So you could see they have provided, rolled hedges into the property. So they went ahead and took it upon themselves to do that. The property to the west, we would donate that hatched area, and they would provide us access off Lilian. So kind of a lot line reconfiguration in order to make this happen.
Yeah, and this is conceptual. I know that the flag lot has to be 20 feet, for example, this, you know. One of the things I wanted to show the board on this map so they understood was, obviously, there would be a common driveway off of Lilian serving all four lots, okay? But we only have one flag strip, as you can see. It's attached to what is shown as Lot 1. So Lot 1 would, you know, ultimately have frontage on Lilian Lane, and Lots 3 and 4 have frontage directly on Montauk Highway. If you look at Lot 2, which, you know, is closest to Lilian Lane, they're showing the flag strip coming to Montauk Highway there. And that's basically because they have to have legal road frontage on a subdivision. So while they're showing that, because they have to have road frontage, ultimately, the access to the, to the lot would have to be via the common driveway off of Lilian Lane. So I just wanted to, you know, sort of show that.
Lilian is a private road. Right?
I don't believe so.
No, I believe it's a town road.
Town road?
Yes.
So now with just four lots, you're talking about proposing four instead of six?
Yes.
The back two or the south two lots would access through Lilian Lane, and the north two would go to Montauk.
So we would, what we'd want to do is have a common driveway for all four lots. But the way the code is written, we would have to have three, and then one off Lot 1 off Montauk.
Sorry. Yep.
And it would be presented that way. It just, we would have, we would build it in a way that all four lots are connected to Lilian.
So the cluster that you submitted, which is four lots instead of six?
Yes, that's what we prefer to do, so.
Well, it's a standard plan. They're not showing a cluster plan.
This is a standard.
This is a standard plan, you know.
There, there is no open space allocated in this design. Have you been creative and looked at trying to design this parcel in other configurations?
Built out.
As open space as in?
Some land with trees.
Oh, so, so.
Since it's all wooded.
Yeah.
The whole parcel is wooded.
Yeah, for sure. And we would actually try to reduce, so we would have some areas along Montauk Highway specifically. That whole buffer, our intent would be is to keep it all tree-landscape. So with providing a bigger piece of parcel allows us to kind of mitigate leaves from the trees on that part. So we haven't gotten, this is super conceptual, so we just stopped at the lot lines, but if.
That's why this is a work session.
Yeah, for sure.
So you're getting input from the planning board.
But yes, our intent is to provide, I mean, it is a fully wooded parcel.
Yeah.
So if we could retain, I believe, east of us at the Hamlet Inn, so it's the hotel. So our intent would be to fully buffer this development. And by doing four lots at, four lots at 40,000 square feet, that it gives us the ability to buffer.
So one of the things, you know, this wasn't my pre-app report, I'm just another planner, but one of the things that came out of this was the discussion of a potential future subdivision. It was acknowledged that it's not adjacent to any preserved land at all, so it wouldn't connect to anything. So it was sort of left open-ended in that, you know, considerations of clearing restrictions and buffers and stuff like that, you know, could also be a way. Because, you know, the way it was written is that, you know, on balance, if you reduce the density, maybe there's a way, you know, to accomplish tree preservation, you know, outside of the clustering, but that's, that's the board's decision.
Shinnecock Hills also.
Yeah, and to that point, we usually oppose clearing restrictions in Shinnecock Hills.
And it's R20, it's not R40.
R20, sorry, yeah.
The problem with creating open space parcels in these areas is that who's going to own them?
Well, that's the other side of it, I, you know.
The town doesn't want it.
No, I don't.
The other side is the town may not want it. So then the question becomes is if, it's not going to be a town owned and being left to a homeowners' association, which I don't know if they're going to create one for four lots.
Right.
Conic Land Trust, then the question is, then we could use any other legal mechanism, an easement or a buffer, you know.
Right.
That's how typically we handle it.
It looks right now like the, the two houses are sort of much closer to Montauk Highway than they are to the rest of the properties.
Yeah, and that's super conceptual. What we wanted to outline is the lot areas, how big the lots would be, and where the setbacks would fall. And we have no objection to buffer, so using those setbacks in a way to buffer and completely screen the development. I think building four houses along Montauk Highway would prefer to have some of that buffer zone, so.
I think the people driving by would like to not see the houses, but I think the people in the houses would like to not see.
No, for sure.
And they don't want to hear.
And that's really the intent of doing the 40,000 versus the 20, because the code does permit 20,000 square foot lots. You would essentially have to clear the entire lot to fit the house, you know, any kind of house there, so, which is why we're going in with reduction.
So I think what you're hearing is tree preservation is important to us.
Yeah, not, not an issue.
For community character, habitat, all the reasons.
Not an issue.
And so the ways that you could incorporate that into your final plan would be buffers that are, you know, you know, along Montauk Highway and, you know, actually specified where it makes sense. But I think also, even though it's not required, having some kind of clearing restriction, because even though you're using four lots instead of six, the person could still just clear cut their whole lot and maximize it. So, you know, let, have buffers specified, but then do a clearing restriction to let them figure out what makes sense in terms of navigating what's remaining on the site.
On a design like this, when you have a flag strip that's not going to be used for access, we can make sure that flag strip stays wooded, you know.
Right.
Even on that side of the property. So there are things we could.
What, what's the property to the east?
The motel.
Motel. Motel. And on the west, it's just a residence?
Just a residence, yeah.
Yeah. And it's, so what is this, split zoning? This is R20 and?
The entire parcel is R20.
Right, but then to the east with a hotel?
It's also R20. Yeah, the R20.
R20 with a hotel?
Yeah.
That's, that's there a long time.
Yeah, it's a pre-existing.
But it seems like a 20-foot buffer along the east, north, and west sides, and then some kind of clearing restriction based on maybe running a few scenarios, what the percentage looks like, reasonable?
Yeah, that's totally reasonable.
And a substantial, I would say, a substantial buffer to the north where you have those large trees. Have you done a tree inventory of the parcel?
Not yet.
Can you take a look at it?
Yeah, for sure. When we pull the survey, we could do an inventory of what's, what's there. And as I stated, our intent is to keep as much buffer from Montauk, even the hotel to the east, of course. But once we lay out the footprints and determine how big the footprints will be, we can kind of play around with and present to the board.
Now, how will you get in to do your construction? Through Lilian Lane? Or we, what's the best access here?
I have to look at that a little bit.
Okay, but that's a consideration.
It is, you know, because on the, on the one hand, coming through Lilian Lane isn't ideal for the people living on Lilian Lane. It chops up the road. We had this issue where someone came in for a temporary access off of Montauk.
Yes.
So it might be something we have to look at, you know.
Temporary access.
Temporary replant. Wherever it's least dense.
Yeah, but that's exactly right.
Of inventory.
Like what we did with another application. There was one section, a budding Montauk Highway that was somewhat treeless.
Yeah, the corner, the western corner, top corner, looks like it's.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, the northwest corner, probably the.
Exactly.
But we can, we can, when we get the survey, we'll tag the trees.
Yeah, okay.
Think about that as well.
Yeah, for sure.
Because that's. Because what happens, we get a lot of, or too many, over-clearing situations where the contractor says, oh, well, I had to take down all the trees because I couldn't get in the septic, and I couldn't do this, and I couldn't do that. Well, we're now requiring project-limiting fencing on a parcel so that the foliage is not disturbed?
Yeah, absolutely. When you imply clearing restrictions, then, you know, prior to any construction or any clearing, a project-limiting fence has to be installed.
Yeah, you've got to, so that everybody knows you're not supposed to go there.
What about archaeological study?
We have not performed that yet.
Okay.
I believe at one point it was performed, but we'd have to go and.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure, but just looking back at the old application, it looked like one was performed.
We had this in before, Anthony, is that what you said?
We had it in for the, for the lot line component of this project.
Of the two?
The two lots to the south to try to just get an access point.
Okay.
It was a whole different team.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is actually better for me because I know what's happening now. Instead of leaving it open-ended, whatever, now we know.
So your intent is to punch through the cul-de-sac?
Correct.
And was it in?
They're not going to be happy, these people, you know, because they think cul-de-sac is the dead end, and that's where the kids play. And then you come in and you have to open a cul-de-sac? So there'll be a public hearing on it. So there'll be a public hearing on it.
Oh, yeah, there'll be comments, for sure.
Yeah, and there was some prior negotiations, as you can see, with the land swaps that were done.
It's presumed that these two people won't complain about it, but, you know.
They're getting, they're getting land, right?
They're getting land.
Yeah.
As part of it.
Getting land for access.
Correct.
So I think that, you know, what you're hearing is the buffering, clearing restrictions.
Yep, I wrote it all down.
Is Lillian Lane paved, Anthony?
Yeah, because it's a town improved.
Because it looks so small here, it looks like a tree.
It's a town road.
Okay.
And is there a disturbed area there?
There wasn't access from Montauk Highway onto that.
No, in the middle. Up there.
Yeah, there's something in the middle of the property.
This is an access to that lot.
Anthony.
Oh, right down there, I, yeah, I'm not sure what that is, it's not popping up. It was a structure that didn't have a CEout from what, what we were told, so the structure's no longer there. I don't know how old this area is, to be honest with you, but there was a structure on site that did not have a CEout.
You know, one of the things, we'll, we'll have a clearing line shown on the, on the survey, obviously, when we get an application.
Great, okay. Did you get enough from us?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Perfect.
Are you good?
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Let's do something wonderful and keep as many trees.
We will. Yeah, I don't know, I can take these back.
Claire, are we doing the watermill shops in the work session?
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So go to the watermill shops. That's Claire's application. Hello.
How are you guys?
Good. Hi, Brian, how are you?
I'm well, Neil.
Good.
It should, it should be the most recent.
Chairs, a few.
Yeah, there's a chair over there.
This one?
Yep.
Want a chair?
You want to come up or you're good?
I'm good here. No, you sure?
I'm full of truth.
Okay. No problem.
It'd be easier to look at.
Come on.
There we go.
So, um, the watermill shops, I think you're familiar. I think we have a lot of, lot of changes to it over the years. So these are new owners and they'd like to present, like, an idea about landscaping improvements on the property. And they do want to go forward with an application to increase the number of units that are permitted on the property, which I think right now is, what, eighteen?
Nineteen, I calculated.
Okay. And then just introduce yourselves to the board.
Yeah.
Well, I'll start. Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
We came all the way in from California just for this meeting, so we're happy to be here. I mean, there are worse places and weather to show up in.
This is a nice time of the year.
So thank you for having us. So David and I are the principals of a company called Runyon. We've been in business for twenty years, mostly on the west coast, but some east coast properties. And we specialize in, I would call it boutique retail and restaurant areas around the country. We did a project in Montecito, California called The Post. And you'll notice that this project, we call The Post Two. But that's a bit of a misnomer because we've been coming here to this particular set of buildings for over a decade, watching their development. The buildings that we were looking at were seven sixty, Montauk Highway, and this includes six, both six seventy and seven sixty. So they sort of bookend the town, or the commercial strip, if you will. And have been watching seven sixty and, and thinking, God, what a beautiful set of buildings and what an incredible opportunity. And I'm sort of sorry to say, over that time, we've never seen the buildings live up to their potential, let's say. And we've always come here and said, man, if we could get a chance to, to try and help and, and make them what they really could be. And that opportunity came a couple of months ago to buy both seven sixty and six seventy.
Now, those are the two shops, shopping centers, I'm calling them, on, on opposite sides of the traffic line.
Exactly, correct.
The more, the newer one and the one that's been there with the post office for a hundred percent.
A hundred percent, correct. And if you're driving in, you know, I don't have to tell anyone here, but it's really the first thing that you see as you come into that commercial strip as the, the road turns. So we were, you know, really, as far as we see it, lucky enough to have the opportunity to come in and bring some life and, and some, maybe some new ideas into these properties while obviously respecting all of the history and the zoning that exists currently. So our asks, I should move this a little, our asks won't include any additional square footage and, to my knowledge, won't include anything outside of the current allowed zoning, as it is. And they're really going to focus on enhancing what's there now. And frankly, like, everything, time has, you know, is, is kind of tough on buildings and, and these haven't had enough love over time. So we're coming not to be prescriptive today, but to ask questions of you all as representatives of the town and stewards of these buildings. As we come up with our plan, how can we, you know, we have some ideas that we've put down on paper, but more as a prompt to be able to listen, so that when we come, we've incorporated a lot of the, the learnings that we've had here. So I'm happy to sort of walk through the presentation. Yeah, and if you guys have had a chance to read it, it's probably like more dense.
They don't have it, they just have our, our copy.
Oh, oh, oh.
Look at it.
Yeah, yeah, happy to do it. Okay, good, I'm, I'm sorry, so let me, I'll, I'll be a little, it's a lot of words and not a lot of pictures, so I'm sorry that you'll have some time with it, okay. So the first, I almost want to start, you know, if we could, if it's okay, I don't have control over the screen. If we could start at the next slide, that would be really helpful. So the way that we started looking at it was, I'm, I'm going to use my words carefully here, but the, this strip of commercial area doesn't quite feel like the other commercial areas across the Hamptons, let's say.
It's disconnected from the other ones.
Yeah, we just said, well, why is that exactly? And, and I won't read all the words, but there are certain elements that tie, you know, whether it's Bridgehampton or, or Main Street right here, together, that this doesn't have. It's a separate, it's kind of very poorly maintained in the bottom left. You can see poorly maintained tree wells, just no potted plants out front. You know, the buildings have been sort of left to degrade and the landscaping hasn't been updated. So we started looking and saying, how can we make, and on six seventy and seven sixty, I'll use that parlance if it's okay with you guys, how do we make six seventy, which really sits proud and should feel like the other commercial areas out here, feel more like the commercial areas out here? And we have some suggestions, removing the built-in planters, expanding the sidewalk on our side. Of course, we don't want to get involved with the state and the public side of the sidewalk, but how can we make our side of the sidewalk a little bit bigger, remove the in-ground planting to make it feel better?
Fix the broken bricks so you don't trip.
Yes, a hundred percent. That's the, the least of it. Let's go to the next slide, please.
We had just one issue here in terms of architectural detail.
Yeah.
Where a lot of the window replacements, it, the pattern had been divided panels.
Yes.
And there was a lot of resistance to replacing, and so a lot of those windows were replaced with just single-panel windows, which completely then destroys the architectural integrity.
Hundred percent. Yeah, our, our position on windows and doors is, I think there's, and we'll get into it in the presentation, there's probably a pretty good precedent for divided windows and a good precedent for straight-through windows, which we have pictures of. We don't, and we'll ask your guys' position on it, we don't have a strong position, but whatever you choose, you got to stick with it. It, it's got to be uniform across the building and, we can, we'll get into it a bit, but I, I couldn't agree more. Let's go to the next slide, please. Six seventy is a really special building. We think it's just magical. And if you look, you'll see the top middle slide is The Post in Montecito that we own and recently opened. And, and actually, the top two slides are, are buildings that we have and the U shape around it is the current six seventy. We think that there's a huge opportunity in those small alleyways for intimate gatherings. People don't like feeling, and we'll get to seven sixty where we have a beautiful lawn, but there's something wonderful about being closed in. Where we live, there's a place called the Brentwood Country Mart that I think is worth looking at in a neighborhood called Brentwood, which is a very similar-sized building that just, you feel, it's a small-town feel, you feel good when you walk around these alleyways, if they're done properly. So we think there's a, a huge opportunity to really make those little alleyways special and beautiful. Next slide, please. The next slide actually relates to seven sixty. It's sort of stark coming off of the previous slide. But if you look at the bottom right is a center that we own called The Post, which shows this, this sort of mix of brick and landscape. And one color brick, you know, like this idea that you're just picking a material palette and, and sticking with it. And, and you'll see the, we can go back to the inner courtyard of seven sixty in a moment. In fact, if you don't, actually, let's go to the next slide, because it has it here. And, you know, I'm sorry, let's actually go back to the first slide. Sorry to put you to work on the, on the keyboard.
One more.
One more back, please.
Thank you.
And if you could enlarge it to whatever extent it's possible for folks to see. That's a real, to use a Yiddish term, a mishmash of concepts in there right now. There's sculptures, there's dead trees, there's dead grass, there's a lot of stuff. And our concept is to actually, and this is really the majority of the work, you know, significant investment that we want to make in making this a reasonable layout where folks can come and enjoy themselves through all seasons on the grass, flanked on both sides by a very rational lineup of trees. And, I mean, the drawing kind of speaks for itself. It's taking what's kind of chaos now and moving it into some sort of order where I think people will feel very comfortable spending time, which is what we want to encourage. And let's go to, I'm scared to say it, I think it's slide six, where we just were. I'll tell you when to stop. That's perfect, thank you very much. Again, this is our Montecito project on the right with the elements of the trellises, these more intimate moments. So while the central green is going to be this large, sort of organized, rational section, we then want to provide these opportunities. And if you can go to the next slide, please, for, for intimate spaces. You can see we didn't rehearse this before, but the, the next slide actually shows, again, The Post in Montecito at the bottom. And then the conditions currently at the top of how do we screen from the street while not closing things off? So providing a slight buffer on the highway, and I always think about this, I have three young kids. I want this to be a place where I can bring my kids, grab a bite to eat somewhere and let them run around in that central space without the fear that they could trip and literally fall into the highway. So a, a buffer, but at the same time, folks driving by, not feeling like some sort of private gated estate that they can't come into. So some porousness with some safety elements and the pitch of the site is very helpful with that. So that's an idea. And I realize I've been talking forever, but we only have a couple of slides. Going back to six seventy on the next slide, please, is the color palette. I mean, the amount of wires running all over the place is, that's actually a picture of the place. There's just wires everywhere, there are string lights, those are actually copper phone lines that are no longer used. So it's not even like utilities running in there, it's just kind of crazy stuff. So cleaning that up quite a bit and then, you know, bringing in, we use a, a color we call Post Green that we developed. You know, it's, it's a color that has a lot of actually precedent out east. So we're, we're excited to hopefully bring elements of that in. And then again, just systematizing and simplifying the architectural details on these buildings, just giving them some love. Next slide, please. On seven sixty, it's the same color palette. The concept is to unite these two areas. They're separated by about, how many?
Five hundred feet.
Yeah, five hundred feet and what, seven buildings? Seven buildings, but we really want them to feel like one idea in terms of at least color palette. And you'll see the green, you'll see the awnings, you'll see the brick. These are all materials that all of you are very familiar with. They're, they're very typical out here and they happen to be typical in the projects that we own and build also. And then I think to the point that we discussed, windows, awnings and shutters. Uh, next slide, please. We're showing a precedent for open windows here with awnings, sort of all over Southampton. And there's obviously precedence for other styles of windows. We're here to listen on styles of windows that you guys think are interesting, but ultimately, there just needs to be a decision made and a rationalization, let's call it, of the types of doors and windows, which we're excited to make. Next slide, please. Again, you know, Sagaponic General Store is a wonderful example of vernacular architecture that, you know, was done recently, but that feels really appropriate. And we think that there's great opportunities to bring those sort of porches and that porch vernacular that's very, you know, that exists out here into these buildings, because they, they have these porches. They're just not given the proper amount of attention. And then last slide, please, relates actually just back to the same concept of doors and windows. Like, there's a lot of, happened to be a lot of beautiful doors out here and windows. It's just pick one, go with it, get everything to look the same. I don't have a better word. Cohesive, thank you. That's it. We're here to listen. I'd love to get your guys' thoughts on it.
Have you been to the Watermill CAC yet?
This is our first meeting.
Oh, okay. The Watermill has a very active Citizens Advisory Committee.
Of course.
And they're very engaged and they would give you a lot of really good input. If you try to get on their agenda sooner, you know, earlier junction, get positive momentum.
Hundred percent.
And they'll give you feedback.
Yeah, they're good, they're good about that.
And we, we listen to them.
It's great, I appreciate it.
Rachel Verno, it's the president.
Yeah, they're definitely on our list.
Yeah.
We figured we'd go right to the source to start.
Yeah, they meet monthly, I think.
So I have a couple of questions. You, you have The Post and it's in Montecito?
Yeah, Montecito.
Okay, we're not California. And I bring that up because of foliage.
Yeah.
You know, a lot, you have beautiful wisteria blooming. A lot of your presentation is rich, lush flowers and trees and grasses, well, we have grasses. So I think you need to keep that in mind, that in the winter, when it snow, it can be pretty stark. So whatever you put in has to have some robustness, sort of.
We've, we've really become students. There's a woman called Stacy Patsel, who's our landscape architect, who's taken us under her wing and explained seasons to us and.
She's excellent, she's mad.
We were just with her about an hour ago. It was like, and she's been so wonderful to us, because she's like, oh, poor California boys, like, you have no idea. And, and what's, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I was so struck by this idea that, like, it's actually so much more fun to design landscape out here because it's dynamic, that it'll go, it'll become different things in different seasons. Yeah, where we live, it's kind of all the same all the time and it's beautiful, but, so she's, she's been hard at work. She did all these plans and will be our person, but yes, sorry, I got very excited when you mentioned that.
Well, that's great. And then my second question was, you, you mentioned the buildings and you mentioned primarily landscaping changes, but there could be a lot of architectural changes, it seems.
We have quite a few ideas and they, they, we just don't want to trigger entitlements and, and coming to ask folks for things and, and taking a lot of time. We really want to get busy with this. The main architectural work that we're going to do is full paint everywhere, fixing up all of the problematic siding and then adding some detailing, and I'm going to, David will help me, dormers and just new, new.
Yeah, exactly. Awnings, new trim for, you know, like, if different door handles, the lighting fixtures that go in, all the like little features that make a place feel really charming. You know, we've studied just a lot of the architecture here. And, you know, the buildings are, right now, very much a blank canvas. They're, kind of don't have a lot of the detailing that you see in the more historic, beautiful buildings around here. And we think that there's really creative ways that we can bring that charm into this environment and ultimately with the new landscaping, make it feel like a place that people want to spend time.
I think having the narrow alleyways really goes a long way.
Oh, it's beautiful.
Really embrace that, that whole concept.
East Hampton has a lot of that, have you been there?
Yeah, of course. Oh, we've been out studying for a decade, trying, waiting for this moment.
They've used those little alleyways, shops and, which is, which is nice.
People love like that element of discovery where like sometimes you want to be in a big, open space with your kids and there's other times you like want to have a more intimate conversation and want to tuck into a little area where it's, you know, an intimate seating area or there's like a beautiful, you know, other feature. And so for us, it's really important to design these properties in a way where, you know, you can have larger, more expansive opportunities for gathering in other areas where you can kind of discover your favorite place to have coffee in the morning or the favorite place to meet your, you know, spouse, et cetera. And so every little area, we're being very mindful of programming.
And now that outdoor, outdoor dining is permissible in the town, whatever retail shops go in there, you know, if you consider an element of bringing the tables outside so people can experience the greenery that you're putting in.
Because we don't have any of that here.
Yeah, we're.
Really, it's interesting, even into the, there's no place to go outside and then have a park in the middle of it.
We're really excited about it. We have an architect, also happens to be North Shore, started a company called Shop Companies in New York, which is probably one of the largest architecture firms in the country now, most successful. which is probably one of the largest architecture firms in the country now, most successful. And then she said, she kind of said, okay, we did that and she's out here now. And we lucked into being able to have her be part of this project too, in her like sole proprietorship away from shop. So we got a really good team that's thought a lot about this already.
Would you be able to show us the next iteration of, of your plans?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, we're.
Because these are just all conceptual.
Oh, yeah. So where we are in the process is we are closing on the site at the beginning of the year. And to be totally frank, are interested in discovering the process for trying to do what we want to do. And where in other places that we've done business, painting and changing the landscape on your property is a over the counter permit and certainly not something that you have to go through an entitlement. And what's the word I'm looking for?
Like a regulatory board?
Well, certainly.
Airentes.
No, they can say yes or no to.
Well, that usually falls under expedited plan.
Yeah, but you know.
Claire, Claire, Claire will guide you.
Oh, Claire's been incredible so far. But what I said to Claire was, Claire, listen, we're gonna, I mean, the investment that we're gonna make here is, we'll probably spend more, as much on fixing it up as we did buying it. And in order to feel comfortable with that, we asked to come see you all to understand, like, is this something that people are gonna want? I'm, we're just, we, we went into contract and said, well, we assume that painting and doing landscape and demising the spaces from, you know, it was a soul cycle at one point, that five thousand feet, we want that to be a couple's places, wouldn't be something that would rise to the level of a discretionary approval. And it's our understanding that like even items like this, landscape, paint, et cetera, are discretionary, which is, which is why I said to David now this morning, I said, that's why this place looks like it looks because everything is considered and thoughtful. But we kind of have, we have to make a decision over the next couple of weeks as to whether we're going to move forward with this or not and the levels of like risk of doing this. Like we could end up in a position by no one's fault where we've bought this and we're like, we really want to paint it. We want to redo the landscaping. And then we come before the town and the answer is no.
I think you have to give Claire a list of what you want to do.
Yeah.
And she can tell you what is, can be expedited because we've seen many times, we're just painting.
Yeah.
And then the whole wing of the building is taken down. So.
You're closing in January and I'm guessing we want to get the ball rolling by Memorial Day?
We, oh, yeah, no, you know, just our, our schedule is, it wouldn't, the work wouldn't start.
Think of phasing. Say like, I've got some tenants, Memorial Day is the start of the season. What can we get done for Memorial Day?
Yeah.
Get that phased. So phase it out. It really benefit you.
Yeah, we're honestly, we're, yeah, we're just looking, we're not really looking seasonally here. Like our view is sure, the summer's great, but our intention is to build something, we've never sold a building. Like we just own it for the long term. That's a sort of a family concept. And not, not that David and I are family, but both are, each of our families. In the sense that we're not really quick flip type people. So it would be buying it and going through the process and the work probably wouldn't start until after, you know, in the, this time next year, I think. But we just have to, I, I just want to get a read from you all is to like, if you're interested in this kind of thing or not.
Of course.
You know, you know what I'm saying? Like I, I gotta make a.
You also have a brand new multi-family condo unit right next to you.
Sure.
They can walk to the center.
Listen, we're, we're sold. We love this place. I just, I don't want to.
So you understand that?
Yeah, of course.
One of the things I wanted to mention is we've recently begun paying more attention to the parking lots.
Yeah.
Now, I have not been in this parking lot in a long time, but if there's anything you can do, you know, we're looking at landscaping and parking lots and things like that, just to make it, you know, warmer and friendlier. Because obviously they're going to be in the parking lot to get to your properties. If there's anything you can do in that area.
Hundred percent. Well, we, we've looked at, and let me see if we're on the same page. And our budget is lighting and landscape improvements. And I don't know if there's anywhere on Montauk Highway for a shopping area, maybe besides the old Kmart Center that has as much parking as this does.
Right.
I mean, and no one knows. It's a huge.
We also have cross access agreement with, what's the name, Fairfield? What is it?
The one next door?
Next door.
Watermill.
Watermill.
And there's a light, and there's a light right there, which makes it easy to turn into.
There's a signal, right? There is also a conversation with the state to eliminate that light.
Take the light out?
And put in two roundabouts, one on the west side of right Flagpoint Road, Cobb Road that comes out just west of the older of your properties and then down further on Scuttle Hole.
Wow, fascinating.
So there will be two roundabouts and no light.
Yeah, if you want to head east, go to the roundabout.
I mean, but they both spoke ways.
Have people.
Just right turns.
Only make right turns.
What do you, you guys like the roundabout idea or not?
Roundabouts are great.
We have right in front of the Montecito property, they built a roundabout.
Well, I mean, Tom will tell you, every time you have a signal, Tom is our traffic.
Traffic. So we're trying, we're trying to get into the roundabout idea in some places.
I think it's, I think it's great.
Claire is approaching.
Yeah, we have a few more thoughts before we close out.
For perspective, so 25 years ago, there was a college in Southampton and that, the main property there that I think maybe, I don't even know what it is now, what used to be a blockbuster video.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes.
So, you know, people will go there and go get your Chinese food.
Hundred percent.
There was also another restaurant that was a local chef bringing in local food. And I think one of the things that I've seen and have worked in agriculture and various forums here, but there are a lot of farmers and food producers looking for retail space to showcase, right? But the cost of the overhead is so high. And then also what kind of water in and out credits do you have on the site to add a cafe or a little, you know, eatery or something like that? I feel like we're lacking culture and I think you're creating a space that could invite that, you know, kind of cafe, bookshop, live music, local food, Stony Brook Village, Greenport has this, you know, good examples of places to visit, which you may have already been. But I hear what you were saying about let's increase from nineteen to question mark units, which maybe make smaller places for more people. And I think keeping that affordability component, you've got people using the Stony Brook Incubator at Calverton, creating amazing products. There's nowhere to go for those people to have retail space and it could be really great to bring to the community and you have a ready audience that is looking for that, but we're seeing a lot of corporate takeover because the rents are so high. So just something to keep in mind.
I should have started the conversation with that. That is literally what we specialize in. We started 20 years ago working with small independent retailers and restaurants. And to this day, that's all that we do. So the idea of taking the spaces down from a five thousand foot space, which you caught, you know, to a thousand foot space makes it attainable for small businesses. With regard to the farmers, I think they're such a lovely idea because we have an acre in the middle of seven sixty to set up farm stands, right? So no overhead. And the ability for families to come and have an experience where like, they don't have to buy a piece of clothing and go to the restaurants. They can come, do maybe an honor farm stand or on the weekends, they staff them with folks. Like that adds to the feel that, that we have. And is exactly the kind of thing that we do. And I, I would say like, you know, don't believe us, go check the, like, there's a place called Platform in Los Angeles that we own, much more urban, different thing. And then the post in Montecito is very much worth looking at because it's a good precedent for this.
We have only independent tenants in that property. There's no big chains in that property.
Just looking at the Agon Markets, New York State Agon Markets has the twenty C license, food manufacturing versus the Suffolk County Health Department. And people could, you know, move into those spaces and you wouldn't have as much demand on the sewage credit, the sewage flow. So you know, I think looking creatively and what your, the direction that you're heading is really great.
And then so I, I do want to address what you said in terms of sewage and septic, like there's a pretty robust system there. We're not asking for more wet uses. We would swap wet for wet, dry for dry and keep the, we're not going to put any more infrastructure into place. We're going to, that's the whole concept that we're going is using what's there. But yeah, we're, we're nervous, to be honest with you. I have never dealt with a situation where we're going to have to make a financial commitment without knowing whether we can paint our place. And I don't.
That's a building permit, right?
Rest of.
Paint is an innovation.
And landscape, you think?
Well, I mean, a change in the color of the paint.
Same family? Of whites?
Yeah, so.
I mean, you know, you know what we're trying to do.
Ninety-nine point nine percent chance you'll get the paint.
Right. And you reserve the point one percent. Like I'm just dealing in percentages here.
We deal in earth tones out here, you know, so, you know.
No pinks.
Yeah, no pinks, no red bulls.
And the landscape, how robot, like, what do you, I don't know, I'm just, I can't, I flew all the way out here to look in your guys' eyes, faces together.
We have to give Claire more information.
I will.
The CAC is a good resource.
Yeah.
They, they really interact.
Got to get with them.
We have recommended lists of plans, but.
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, we're all over all those.
Stacy is on the board for the Landcraft Garden Foundation in, you know, on the North Fork. She is an excellent choice.
Oh, no, we're not messing around out.
That's an excellent choice.
I just, I gotta, I gotta make a decision in the next three weeks. Like, do I, am I going to get stuck with this shopping center that is not to our standards and have paid way too much money for it and not be able to do this thing?
But you have to make a more detailed plan.
Of, oh, oh, of course.
A lot of cooperation.
One from a zoning perspective, the current, what are we? We are a a Hamlet Retail Center, the density one per fifteen hundred square foot. It seems that that use was kind of created for this project. From what I saw, Foilin, I think he created this specific zoning for this use when it was approved back in the late nineties. We may want to go slightly above that to one per every one thousand twelve fifty per square feet, which we know will be a zoning as well. But like, is that something that seems aggressive to you guys? If we go from eighteen, where we are currently, to twenty-two, twenty-three spaces?
Basically not expanding the footprint of any building.
I think it's smart for the reasons that I was identifying and I know many people.
Smaller shops, really.
No increase, the parking will work, the sanitation will work, from what we've seen so far.
It's like Bergdorf when they had smaller shops.
What we're trying to do is bring density and activity to Hamlet Center, so.
To be a vibrant, it's not vibrant, right?
Yeah, no.
No, well, Watermill is like a pastor. I live five minutes from there.
Yeah, you want it to have a lot of stuff to do.
So, if I may, because I have to close this work session, make a list of what you need immediately and a timetable.
Yeah.
Phase it, as Dennis said, so that you know what you're doing, you know?
Yeah.
I think when you put it down on paper, it becomes much clearer.
Yeah.
And review it with Claire. Claire will say, I think you could do that easily.
Yeah.
But not that. That, you're going to need planning board approval for. So make your list. And Brian, Brian will guide you as well.
Really appreciate your guys' time.
Can you give me your last name?
Miller, Miller is the last name.
Oh, that's easy. David Miller?
No, David Fishbein.
Oh, David.
Miller.
Do you live in Montecito or Brent?
Nah, I live in LA.
Oh, LA, okay. I used to live in Montecito.
Fifth generation. They'll never get me out of LA. Montecito's wonderful.
Yeah, eleven minutes to Rincon.
Yeah. Ooh, that's, you surf or no?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, great.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck. It's exciting.
Stay well, guys.
Brian Locasto with the Adam Miller Group.
We know this guy. Good to see you, Brian.
I'm Jamison McWilliams from the Adam Miller Group.
Oh, you're with Adam Miller as well?
Oh, okay, good.
You're so good. I didn't know.
Good to see you.
Thanks for coming in.
So we're closing the work session and going back into the regular session. And number five, Mark Saladino, Seth, that's you. Ninety-seven Fanning Avenue in Hampton Bays.
So at our last meeting, you reviewed the draft draft report that I presented. You asked us to make a revision.
Seth, I think that there's a problem because it's five of six. It's just, just one page that you've changed?
I saved the trees and then made one small alteration.
Sometimes we pass it down and then everyone, you have one and two, I have three and four. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't going down a dangerous path here.
So this is just a recommendation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We had, we had covered it all before. This is a minor subdivision in the R twenty zone. It's ninety-seven Fanning.
Yep. Remember there were two existing houses there.
You may recall, that's an accessory apartment up there in the northeast corner. And they're dividing off the, the northwest corner. So we had taken, taken a look at a potential conservation buffer, which I have enumerated in this new draft version as a twenty foot buffer to follow the, the northern property line. And just for your information, that would equate to four thousand one hundred and fifty-six square feet of non-disturbance and non-fertilization area.
What's the percentage then of the property? Did you do that?
The actual percentage of the property was four thousand, it's divided between the two properties. So it's partially in the proposed flag lot and, and I don't know, I didn't take it out of each one, but I can certainly sit down and crunch the numbers in two seconds.
Are you going through the recommendations? Is that what you're doing?
This was, I had gone through them at length at the last meeting. So this was the only one I highlighted and you had asked me to bring back the clarity that you, you gave me on.
Are we doing septic upgrades? Seth with?
Yes, yes, certainly. And I understand that's a requirement.
Requirement, okay.
Yes. Well, the, the original house is, is staying as it is. Is it in my recommendations? And I think you might recall that Mark Saladino had said he had just spent considerable monies putting in a new septic system. It might, was not an IA system, but it was a new septic system. At our last meeting, it was mentioned.
Why don't you just systematically go through these recommendations so we can have a discussion?
I was trying to save the board some time.
Jackie, I advised him as the principal planner not to print out twenty pages.
No, that's okay. But so, but the recommendations will go down one by one.
Sure, why not? Yeah. So I had asked them to verify their setbacks. I had pointed out that the height of the accessory building was very close to the proposed lot line that divided in a north to south orientation to the, to the accessory apartment. They produced in front of the board a, an elevation showing that it was sixteen, it was beyond the sixteen feet.
So that's okay.
So that was good.
So you'll.
I still would like the building department to, to make sure. So I, I kept that one in. The second one was they will provide a revised subdivision map with the exact location because I had the covers only for the septic system. And the prince, and the connection between the principal dwelling and the accessory garage apartment. They will furthermore show the water and electrical lines from the principal to that accessory structure. Further, the applicants shall consider updating the septic system to an IA for the existing residents and therefore, and the accessory apartment. So.
Do we have?
The recommendation.
Yeah. Do we have any policy that if there are two parcels and two houses and one is going to be new, that the existing parcel has to also upgrade?
I think the health department.
This is a health department.
What's going to happen is they're going to go to the health department. And if there's, well, first of all, the accessory apartment in the back is going to get a new IA system, period, on the story.
Right, exactly.
The existing house, that will be dependent upon the health department. Sometimes they require it for one reason or another. If it's completely outdated, it was built in the seventies, regardless of not doing anything, they'll make you update it.
Right.
If it's one, not a new system, but one of the older ones that was more contemporary, they may let it, let it slide.
Okay, so it's health department, right?
So, yeah, they do have final say. That's their jurisdiction.
And you say that?
They will need, yeah, my last recommendation is they will need Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval as all subdivisions do. The fourth point, I'm sorry, the third point is it is located in the archaeological sensitive area. So they will require a phase one A, phase one B archaeological report. There's our new system on lot two. Then what I had discussed earlier, or I was attempting to pin down, was the consideration of a buffer on this property. As you can see, there is considerable undisturbed land there in the north. That is where the new flag lot will be situated to the left of the accessory apartment. So I have seen, there is a buffer on a, on the lot to the, to the west, a twenty, that's the Teresi. Yeah, there it is. So this would be perpendicular to that, of the same width following the back property line. And I thought this might serve as not only, obviously, preserving the native vegetation, but also a corridor of sorts.
Wildlife corridor, yeah. What do you figure, twenty feet?
I, I had, I had recommended twenty feet.
Nice.
So.
Yeah, that works.
So I did put that in my, in the newer version, which I can read. The newer version would say the planning board has considered the environmental conditions found on and around the subject parcel and recommends the creation of a covenant and non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer to follow the northern proper line through the proposed lot one and lot two for a width of twenty feet. So it also divides it amongst the two lots. Each one is, is contributing in. The sixth point is the, the standard issue compliance with the town engineer requirements. Again, with the fire prevention recommendations. The noting on the subdivision map of the clearing restrictions per the NLEB from December first to February twenty-eighth. And lastly, again, the health department will have, has jurisdiction over the septic systems and they will need approval.
I had a question on this one because Tom brought up. I had a question on this one, cause, um, Tom brought up the design standards, and I don't think we, you know, Dennis, you had weighed in on that, but we really didn't get a final determination from council, which I think is important, on the bulk of the area of being outs- outside of the flag portion.
The one and a half times, you mean?
Right. So, that, to me, is still a question that I think is important to answer before.
It's not in the zoning ordinance, so it's, it's not a zoning issue, it is in two ninety-two, which is a design standard, that's my understanding.
Design standard.
Kate's point, I think what she was saying is last time.
Shouldn't we follow a design standard?
You know, shall, you know, require, however, you know, we, we, this is, we've been doing this for, for decades now, in looking at this design standard, um, the subdivision regulations, if you're in zoning, you have no ability to modify unless you're doing a cluster plan. The subdivision regulations, and it says it right at the end, the very last thing, and the subdivision, the planning board, uh, has the ability to modify any of the regulations if they determine that it, you know, so that's probably, you know, why we haven't, you know, treated, as you said, cause it says shall, we've never really done that. We've looked at it in certain instances, required it, and it, it doesn't happen very often. We see it more often when we get larger subdivisions, and we have several flag lots within a larger subdivision, these two lots, we don't see it very often.
Okay, so these are, these are the revised, uh, recommendations that would be with the, the draft.
Pre-app report.
Is everybody cool with this?
Yep. Motion by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor, opposed abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you, Seth. You're right on to Patricia Thompson.
Yeah, come on up, yes. Okay.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
I think I printed one too few.
That's okay, don't worry, good.
And your names for the record? Patricia?
Patricia Thompson, my client, the owner of the property, uh, my name is Robert Faschetti, I am Patricia's attorney.
Okay, welcome. So, we're looking at a pre, a draft pre-application report, this, uh, project is located at thirty-seven North Bishop Lane in Tuckahoe, uh, this is the R twenty, uh, zoning, uh, area. Furthermore, it's part of the archaeological sensitive area. The lot size is sixty thousand five hundred and eighty-one, uh, otherwise, uh, also one point four acres. So, uh, the subject property is currently approved with a single-family residence, as you can see there on the, uh, east side of the, close to the east property line, fronting on Bishop, North Bishop, that is. Uh, the proposed subdivision will create two conforming lots, uh, a lot two of measuring thirty thousand three hundred and twenty square feet and a lot one of thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-two. Uh, the lot one is the flag lot accessible via a twenty-foot flag strip following the northern property line. So, I guess you can visualize it by the wooded area in the back, uh, uh, east of that is, is, it would be the property line, and again, to the north is the access route. Uh, in regards to the surrounding area.
Do you have a site plan you could put up?
Map?
Map, something?
There's a map there.
We have one here as well.
I'll bring it to you.
See, there's a, there's a clearing line there.
Okay. Uh, in, in regards to the surrounding area, uh, you'll see to the west, that is, it's delineated as preserved land, but it is owned by the town of Southampton. Uh, it's, so it is public land, uh, this is three forty-four, uh, McGee Street, and currently has an active application, uh, for a community pool, and that's the, uh, Star Aquatic.
Property but in green?
So, that was the one that's, uh, shown, highlighted with, with green surrounding it. And the little triangle or trapezoid down there is, is associated with it. So, that is, uh, immediately to the west. Uh, then, uh, you can see to the north, uh, there's the highway business district, and that has a S and M, storage and warehousing business.
Is that the big, uh, bed building?
Yeah, was that a Morton, is that where we?
Morton Building.
Yeah. Uh, and then you can see that there is a mixture of different single-family residences, uh, I looked, they, they vary between twenty thousand and thirty-five thousand square foot uh, properties.
And this is R twenty?
This is R twenty.
And that commercial?
The commercial is.
That's, that's in the highway business, I think.
Highway business, yeah, so you see the red line, that's the division line.
That's the zoning line.
Uh, so the, the applicant brought in a standard plan, uh, which showed these, this, uh, flag, the creation of this flag lot. Uh, I did not feel that the cluster plan was warranted, uh, I, I propose that to you, as now the conservation board did consider open space. I am looking at something that is, the town is wish, wishes to develop as aquatic recreation center, so.
They weren't aware of that.
Right, perhaps they didn't put the two together.
Yeah.
At any rate, so I did not feel that the cluster plan was warranted, I felt.
The planning board waived it, right?
Yeah.
At the, the planning board waived it already at the time of, yeah.
Okay, well, then enough said.
Yeah.
So, uh, then, the, uh, it's obviously a minor subdivision, uh, pursuant to the two ninety-two six. The conformance with zoning, uh, the both lots will conform with zoning. Uh, I had brought up again the one and a half times design standard. This is an interesting one insofar as the entirety of the lot would meet that standard, but if you, the, it does call for the reduction of the flag pole, which would put it underneath, so it is, uh, it is conforming, obviously, with R twenty, but that one and a half, if you deducted the flag, it's twenty-six thousand, as opposed to thirty thousand.
Again, not usually enforced on the.
Not an enforceable, or I shouldn't say.
Well, it's not. Inforceable, but I just mean it's not usually implemented on a two-way.
It's not a zoning code, it's not a zoning requirement, it's a design requirement. In other words, you, you take a, the R twenty zone, you take a, a fifty thousand square foot box, you don't go twenty-five and twenty-five. Go twenty on the road, you go thirty in the back, if you have that ability, that's the whole driving force behind it.
Uh, moving on to the secret classification, it is a type-two action, I did note in that section, though, that, again, it is in the New York State Archaeological Sensitive Area refer, uh, requiring further study. Uh, the park requirement in this case, uh, the, the area is underserved, uh, however, this is creating just one additional lot. So, a payment of a park fee in lieu of, uh, parkland of twenty-five hundred, uh, would be something we suggest. Uh, the public comments, uh, there was a public hearing on August twenty-eighth, and there was no public comments received. This is not, uh, subject to the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. And then, moving into the referrals, I'll try to just highlight the, the key points. Uh, the town engineer on August twenty-fifth did mention that the existing encroachments on the north side of the property are to be removed. Uh, you can't really see them, but they're, I guess, the, the neighbor to the north has a shed.
A real fence.
And a fence. Uh, so those would need to be removed, and the Suffolk County Water, uh, Main, uh, needs to be depicted in the final, final map.
What are we doing with septic on this one?
Uh, the septic is, again, shown as, as covers, uh, I would say that we need to also show the exact location of the septic system.
Is, is health department, health gonna require IA on the existing house?
Oh, for sure.
On the new one, for sure, they'll look at, we'll have to get certified the, the system in the front, and they'll decide if it meets their criteria.
Right, or they wanna.
That's gonna, totally their call then.
That's their, that's their call.
Yes, these are their call. We can call it out on the map.
And so then our next version of the map, have, once we've gone to the health department, will show the full, you know, the location and proposed and existing.
Then, the town engineer did go on to, to mention that there should be some, uh, updated, updates on the bearing lines, um, that will need, are required for the final map as well. As well as monuments and three foot, uh, three inch, excuse me, drainage for the impervious services. The town conservation board, uh, they had, uh, quite a few recommendations, and I guess we'll just address each one, uh, as it, as it, as it's listed. Uh, so they did do an environmental assessment, uh, they did call out, as I pointed out to you, that, uh, next door was ten-plus acres of public open space and recre- uh, recreational grounds. I would say that recreational grounds, or it was, when it was recently granted, uh, there was a grant by the town to the village for forty-five thousand for the IA system next door, they called it a comfort station. So, it is recreation, comfort, um.
You mean on the pool property?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but that's their property.
Uh, yeah, that's separate, I'm just trying to say, it, it being close, uh, a budding open space, or is it a rec, I'm trying to define exactly what's next door, and it seems to me it's a, it's for development, comfort station, recreation, this is not a park.
Yeah, whatever, yes.
Yeah, it was.
You can name it what it is.
Yeah, the purpose of the purchase was for active recreation.
I think it seems to me like, so the, the town conservation board's comments are sort of under the umbrella of thinking it's a park and.
GIS pulls it up as a preserved area.
Oh, so that needs to be updated.
An initial thing you.
And it was preserved initially as open space. When Starr came in and wanted to use the property, the town went back to Fred Thiel to get an opinion on whether or not this was an, an acceptable use for open space. So, it was initially not purchased for a pool.
Okay. Uh, so the conservation board did say, um.
So, they want a buffer?
Yes.
Because, again, here we have a property that's heavily treed, and the area where you wanna build a home, so.
Their recommendation was a, uh, to preserve the naturally vegetated lands, and I believe they, they were suggesting a minimum of fifty feet unfenced conservation buffer along the westerly rear boundary of property one, which would be the division with the town-owned land.
Fanning, we did twenty feet though. Yeah, fifty, yeah, twenty is what we did on the last map, in the base.
I think tw- twenty, I think, would be, uh, much more palatable.
I mean, I wouldn't even want more, but I don't know where you're gonna have a, you have space to build a house, I'm sure it'll be a modest house.
It's a buffer against more, at least that back part of the property, from what I understand, even when the pool goes, would still be, you know, so we're not separating any two uses as much as just sort of adding a buffer onto what is gonna stay, a, a section of, of wooded open space.
But we're trying to keep some trees here.
No, understood, understood. Our, our bigger concern, and not to jump ahead, is the, the, the trail proposal, uh, sorry, I'll let you finish.
Otherwise, yeah, we'll, we'll be going round and round.
Yes.
So, conservation did, uh, suggest the fifty feet, and they did offer us some, some numbers for us to understand what that would, uh, set aside. The preservation threshold would amount to eight thousand six hundred and fifty square feet, which is equal to thirty-three percent of the area of lot one, uh, excluding the flag strip. And this would be less than the forty foot, uh, excuse me, forty percent lot area protection standards for the same-sized lot in, in APOD. So, that's their suggestion to the board. Then we can move on to the trails advisory, uh, board, who, who are also interested in, uh, perhaps, well, they have proposed a twenty-foot wa- twenty-foot wide strip to be created on the southern property, uh, southern border of the property, to provide for pedestrian slash biking link from North Bishop Lane to the, uh, to the proposed aquatic center.
Do you have an overlay for the trails?
We do, certainly.
So, these are the trails, can you see that? The trails are in yellow.
Yeah.
Not, not, kind of, but here, and then the walking trail that's associated with McGee, is it the McGee Park, Moses Park, Moses Park?
Moses Park.
In the village, where you have the access for the village, so it's down here.
There's nothing.
That's the closest trail, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, that's correct, so their, their thought is, is North Bishop running north, north-south. There's, there's no connection from the lower park there with its trail to anything over to the west. So, again, their idea is to, to set aside a public eas- uh, public access easement. Uh, their suggestion is, was twenty feet, uh, perhaps we can, uh, consider less. I, I did see it as, uh, there was potential, uh, it's, it showed potential, if this is truly a recreation center, there will be a lot of people biking and walking, uh, to that center.
Understood all, I understand that logic, but this is an illogical connection. It's not, doesn't seem to me to see, there's probably better trail connections here that can be mapped out. Why, I would ask that the trails submit to us a proposal about how, the way we do cross-access maps. Give us a map about how they see a connection, because this property is to the north.
Our concern about the connection too, is if that is then going to be used as the aquatic center, we're not talking about a connection to a, a, really a trail system for hiking, we're talking about now a commercial acc- access to a commercial property, they're gonna then be people parking on Bishop's and.
Right.
Understand, yeah.
That will be a concern for us.
Yeah, it's a residential area, so they've gotta be, they should be able to figure out, or propose to us where they would like it, so that.
Okay.
Is that meaning not on, like, I, we don't support it on this property, are you suggesting that the trails should be on a different property, or a different part of this property?
Well, leave it up to the trails, let them give us, let us a, um.
It's very close.
Proposal.
Yeah, we, we also have the, um, the neighbor Mars, Mark, um.
Vagianus.
Vagianus, uh, here in, in the crowd as well, he owns the property to the south, he's also, uh, he would be between this property and, and the, you know, on the other side of the trail, and is also, I don't wanna speak for him, but also opposed to the idea for privacy and, and.
It seems to be not a very logical, usable.
Yeah, it's too constrained, it's too constrained for the trail.
I, when I get, we get to the recommendations, I will eliminate it, so, it was.
Or you can explain why.
Yes, of cour- no, I will put, without a proposed linkage, uh, it didn't seem a, a reasonable request. Uh, that was the advisory board, so Southampton, uh, Office of Fire Prevention, as their recommendations were the standard, uh, standard issue.
But we want a buffer on that southern end too, so you, they're not clear-cutting right down to.
Yes.
To Vagianus, we wanna keep that, some of the natural vegetation on the south too.
We want a buffer.
Like here?
It doesn't have to be, yeah, along the southern, along that southern edge. So, property owner can't clear, clear-cut right down to the, uh, property line.
And since this is R twenty, the, the accessory structure setback is ten feet, could we keep that buffer to ten feet, that way it's, it's not taking away from the accessory.
You understand the intent.
So, this is, uh, something I can add to the recommendations, would be the addition of a ten-foot buffer along the southern property line?
Yeah.
And that's a non-disturbance, non-vegetation.
Yeah, that way you keep the natural greenery, it serves both property owners.
Yeah, that's fine.
And you were here probably to hear the last conversation, but we're gonna require a project limiting fence on your property when you build, so that whatever is, we've determined to be a buffer, stays a buffer.
Okay.
So, that fire prevention, uh, standard issue, uh, recommendations, similar for Department of Health Services, uh, they have not received a wastewater application, and they will, uh, they will need to, the applicant will need to submit one, uh, in order to move forward, forward to final application. Fire districts, again, no action, uh, no recommendations. Uh, moving on to the board's recommendations, uh, the, number one, I had put down that the planning board has considered these environmental, uh, conditions, uh, would like to, uh, put a covenanted conserv- conservation buffer to follow, uh, the western property line, and I.
And why don't you add the southern?
Yep.
So, could we say twenty feet in the back and ten on the side, is that?
I think that works, yeah, twenty and ten.
I would go for twenty-five, but twenty is all right, it's such a tiny lot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yes, thank you.
As long as you save the trees.
Final word is twenty, then.
Do I hear twenty-five?
I always thought that you couldn't cut down, I mean, a certain amount of trees anyhow, there's.
It's a different part of the town, you're not in that.
Oh, okay.
Restriction here, so we've put it into the site plan.
We built our house twenty years ago, and we can only cut a certain amount of trees, I'm in the woods.
Yeah.
And it was like, you know, you can't clear the whole thing, you know, so.
So, the twenty is the west side and the south side, or we're discussing?
Heard ten.
Heard ten.
Ten on the south and then twenty on the west?
That's, I think, what we said earlier.
Okay.
Yes. Next name.
You wanna keep the hedge, the trees, it shows right on the map there. See the hedge?
Yeah, we just keep that in place.
What is that, is that ten feet?
You can augment that as well. I mean, what is it, just a low hedge? I mean, we would want more than that.
Trees.
Yeah, it's a tree line, I can find out what the distance is there.
You don't want a future property owner just clearing, clear-cutting that.
So I add that into the.
Language then on the trail?
Yes, without a proper linkage being demonstrated by the trail advisory board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We prefer not to put a public easement.
No.
Well, it's not the right way to say it.
Not the right way to say it, no.
But you just eliminated that.
The property doesn't present itself, the opportunity for,
I think we have to.
Given the size of the property and the constraints, doesn't present the opportunity for a meaningful trail.
I'm also not sure North Bishop has the kind of width for kind of a natural bike route or something. It's pretty tight up there, as I remember.
It is quite tight. There's, I biked in there and with the traffic, it can get pretty dicey.
Yeah.
Uh, so the, the opportunity does not present itself in this, on this property. And due to the size and constraints, the planning board considered it and is not in favor of a public easement at this time.
Good. So you have historic and landmarks districts?
Yes.
Because it's nineteen thirty. Existing residences nineteen thirty.
Yes, so that will be a referral at the final, final application. As will the submission of a archaeological report. And then the last four are the compliance with other agency requirements, town engineer, fire prevention, updating of the subdivision map for the clearing restrictions. And I did want to add that, that we have advised the applicant that septic flow credits may be required, as this is located in groundwater management zone five. And the proposed lot size is less than forty thousand. Health department.
Good, yeah, yeah. Do you have any more questions of us?
No, I think, I think we're okay with everything that's.
Any more questions from anybody on the board? Okay, so we'll move to accept this pre-apper report. Motion by Gloria and second by Kate, all in favor. Post abstention, six in favor and one absent, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Claire, Claire here, yeah. Number seven, twenty-five Sandy Hollow.
Get Wayne.
Yes.
Um, there's a couple plans.
Right.
Share.
Brenna, I think we'll take your two together. You have two, right?
No, I have four, but we could do the first two and then we can.
You guys want all these?
I got one.
You got one?
Yeah.
Remind, remind me.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
This is pretty straightforward, we had reviewed this pretty clearly last meeting.
Sweet.
And the, pretty much the big question left was, we, the, there was not, there was no separation there. So they have adjusted the trailers to meet that twenty-four feet, so we can adopt this. We had even looked at the conditions, so.
Have they moved them to another area?
They moved them to meet the twenty-four feet.
The plan is to move.
To move them to someplace else?
No, just to adjust them and to meet that twenty-four. It was about twenty feet, so your eyes were good. They, it wasn't quite twenty-four, but they did move them.
Kate, Kate's eye saw that.
Yeah, so the two will be shifted this way and there was also a little retaining wall that will be removed, so that's all.
So it's clear now, okay, good.
Good.
Yeah, but that was it, that was the only.
That was the only issue, yeah, okay.
You wanna adopt it?
Yeah, we do. Moved by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor. Post abstentions, six in favor and one absent, that was easy.
Short stay, Wayne.
You can leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Be the quickest one ever.
Brenna, forty-five Foster Avenue.
This was on the agenda of the last meeting, I'll ask for the day. We reviewed the draft pre-submission conference report, this was for the Gregor Weltrum.
Oh, Gregor Weltrum, yeah.
So we went through the report pretty thoroughly. There were really were no additional revisions or changes. I have copies if you'd like to see them. We have it on again today because it's, we could adopt it at the last meeting, so there were still a couple of days.
We just reviewed it, yeah, can we take a peek? You have it, if you have it?
Comment here. I don't know if I have enough, but I don't know if you need it.
It's okay.
We'll pass on Mark Brenna. We can share if we have to.
Just.
Another one.
Just enough.
There is another one.
So again, there weren't any real revisions apart from a couple of discussion points making it into the final. The bigger items are issued were, especially if you use a special trade contractor other than warehouse and storage. There are some, we're required that the zoning board setbacks on part A. And then the front transition yard, which it's in the board would, I presume here's the board, has the ability to reduce this, especially given existing conditions. In that they, they wouldn't be required to do a phase one, A and one B because the site's been historically disturbed since the fourth year.
Engineer looked at this property? Did the engineer look at anything for here for drainage?
Not yet. Oh, I'm sorry, no, not pre-submission.
Okay.
They'll look at it when it comes in for final.
Okay.
Go straight to the time engineer.
Is there? There are issues here with drainage?
Yeah, I think they, I mean, they're already.
The front parcel to the north and west. Anthony, can you point that out?
Across the street.
Across the street and then over, over?
Toward the road.
The big, the big building, the big building, yeah. They had to put in extra drainage, there's a swale that comes right down.
All feeds into there.
That road and it all pools, so that's why I ask if the, if the engineer had.
No, not yet, not, not for a pre-submission, but we'll have a look at it as soon as it comes in for final.
Okay. We went over everything, right?
We did, yeah. If there's anything you wanna look at, I'm back, yeah.
That's it, drainage should be reviewed later, great. Anybody, everybody okay with this? Motion to approve, checked by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Post abstention, six in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Chuck, just before we go to seven eleven project, can we just go to fourteen real quick? I think Dave added here.
Yes, Charlie Fox.
Charlie Fox.
Yeah. So it's, you're deeming a complete and scheduling a public hearing, Anthony? November thirteenth. November thirteenth.
Yep, we had previously deemed this application incomplete. This is on County Route Thirty-nine, just to the east of McGee Street. It's for a cannabis retail operation. Previously deemed it incomplete, we have a revised plan that came in, some additional information, so now we're ready to deem it complete and schedule the hearing for November.
Thirteen, right. Motion, motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Post abstention, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Didn't even have to come up.
Hidden Cove Marina?
Nine eleven Flanders.
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven.
Seven eleven.
Oh, oh, we're back, sorry.
You remember that, that book?
And we do have members of the project team on Zoom.
On Zoom?
Thank you.
Okay, may I have your name for the record?
Jefferson Murfree, Sag Harbor, New York.
How many trees did you kill?
I know, one.
You wanna copy? Anthony, did you wanna copy?
I have one.
Okay.
Yes, I do, it doesn't matter. So everyone's familiar with this project, so.
Yes.
At the traffic circle, so.
So getting better and better and better.
Yeah, we've been looking at this a long time and obviously we had meetings on recently. Big things, when we previously went from a positive declaration, conditional neg deck, and we're still gonna do a conditional neg deck here and I'm gonna go through what we need to go through. We had designed and put together an actual sketch, attached it to the conditional neg deck and said this is what it should look like. That was based on the property as, just the property as we see them now. It didn't include the village business property that was never on the table. So the fact is, is that they relocated that building all the way to that parcel, which shifts it as far away from the traffic circle as possible, but, you know, good. You know, they've also increased the landscape area, the impervious surface, addressed some of the little bit of traffic issues that we had to address for the traffic consultant. But I think we're at a point that we could still do a conditional neg deck. I'm gonna go through what I need to go through and most of the additional conditions, some of them are the same that we had last time and then most of them are from the Pine Barrens review. I had forwarded to the board the Pine Barrens that reviewed this project. And it was nice, they gave us a nice review with some, some information that we can incorporate into this project, so. So actually, if you go to page two, we don't need to go through the description of the project and just be built there. Just so you know, on page two, what was removed? You know, the convenience store as an accessory. They also, when they applied to the ZVA, said if it was an accessory, they also requested variances for a use variance, any maximum number of uses. Those have all been eliminated by relocating.
Why is the convenience store being eliminated? It's not eliminated.
It's not eliminated, the, the variances for it are being eliminated
Okay.
because it's in a different zoning district now.
It's in VB, it's moved over to the next lawn.
Property's VB, this, where it was before is highway business, I should've, I should've said that. So it's conforming. The gas station, there were dimensional relief, thirty point six feet. They, they now shifted the canopy to meet that setback. And the lot area, they've combined lots, so we don't have a lot area issue. So it eliminated those variances. The variances they're applying for now are mostly sign-related. Lot to do with, as you know, color. One of them was for size, for example, because the, the corner monument, not monument sign, the.
Welcome to Riverside.
Free-standing side, which has the gas prices, also had a welcome to Riverside element, which made the sign too big, the ZVA wasn't happy with that. So we're gonna do the welcome to Riverhead sign as a separate.
Riverside.
Riverside, I said Riverhead?
Yeah.
We gotta go, Jeff. So we'll do that as a separate, so we eliminated that and we have a few others, so I'll go through some of the.
You'll go through the variances, okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, what we're going to try to eliminate, yeah.
The remaining, okay.
So if you go to page three, actually, the impacts on land. So yeah, we said that there would be significant impacts on land as a result of this and, but we also have to acknowledge that the site is also very blighted and that this is gonna be a vast improvement to what's there, including the cleanup that happened from the old gas station. So there would be significant impacts on land. And if you look at the bottom of page three, it says the planning board finds potentially moderate to large impacts and will ask for the following mitigation. And you'll find that these are consistent throughout the other issues because they largely revolve around the same thing. So, for example, submission of an approve, an approval of a revegetation plan to demonstrate compliance with the CLUP standard for a maximum of sixty-five percent clearing. So that's gonna be a condition of the neg deck. And frankly, they've already started working on this stuff and have already addressed it in the design, but.
Is it revege or veg?
Well, that's true, that's true.
It does not re.
There's nothing there.
There's nothing there.
One tree.
Well, the Pine Barrens did pick up on certain vegetation that they did ask for to be protected, so. Again, protection of existing vegetation to be included in the landscaping plan to be reviewed and approved by the planning board at the time of formal submission of the formal site plan, including noted large trees on the property. Increase the setback of the fuel storage tank. I wrote here, it says to an additional ten feet. Right now it sits eighteen feet from the road. It's probably in, close to where the old one was. The Pine Barrens asked it to be shifted as much as possible, just so it could be as far away from the river. We should note that obviously this property is separated by a traffic circle, road, other businesses and everything else, but the applicant did agree to shift it.
Ten feet?
Yeah, so we're gonna put in there though, rather than say an additional ten feet.
It'll be set back twenty-eight feet.
It'll be set back to a point of twenty-eight feet from, from.
And that's where the ten feet was, it's currently eighteen and we, we are able to shift it back an additional ten feet for a total of twenty-eight.
Yeah, we're gonna put that number.
We just wanna be.
Twenty-eight feet, yeah, great.
Decrease the amount of impervious surface, I wanna say to the maximum extent.
We don't wanna give them a percentage?
No, because they're under their coverage, to be quite honest, so something. I, you know, I don't really have a number in mind. I think it has to be a product of, you know.
Further cyclone review.
So something, but, you know, they're under the coverage and they've, you know, they've lowered it, so. And they've increased also the amount of landscape area, so I think, you know, we're getting there. And landscaping plan to limit plantings to fifteen percent fertilized vegetation, that's what was asked for, so we're. Again, the impacts on groundwater.
Excuse me, do you want, do you put the D, the Pine Barrens recommendations here? You kept them separate?
Those are the Pine Barrens recommendations, I've incorporated, you're the lead agency and you're the one making the decision, I just simply took their recommendations
And add them.
and added them in here. I could certainly, certainly add, Becky.
I think you need some reference to them, yeah.
Okay, I will.
You could have referenced to it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll put a references.
Protection of existing vegetation as recommended by.
As recommended by the Pine Barrens Commission.
By the Pine Barrens.
I will add it to all of them, as a matter of fact. And then you go to page four, again, we identified groundwater issues and all the reasons why we stated in there. If you go to top of page five, again, some of the additional mitigation. Compliance with the recommendations per the environmental site assessment prepared by Vertex dated February third, twenty twenty-one. We looked at that, actually, we'll just add it as an addendum, they did the cleanup there, the DEC signed off on the cleanup, but there's always residual. You have an old building, maybe an oil drum sitting in there, so they simply identify some, you know, additional work that would need to be done at the time of construction.
The old gas tanks were taken out.
They were taken out.
They're gone.
They're gone, and, and it was remediated, the DEC signed off on it. Which, by the way, now that I'm saying it, I should put that in here about the DEC stuff, that's very important.
Here, Anthony?
Yeah, I'm gonna put it in, yeah, I'll put it in.
Add?
It's also listed in the EAF part one.
I'll, I'll add it probably to.
Add DEC sign-off, okay.
Again, impact on critical environmental areas, again, we noted it's near the river, it's in the aquifer, it's central pine boughs, compatible growth. So if you look at the top of page six, again, you'll find the same conditions. Compliance with the environmental site assessment, a revegetation plan, protection of the existing natural vegetation, increasing the fuel storage tank to twenty-eight feet, decreasing the amount of impervious surface and landscaping limited to fifteen percent. Because, remember, these are on top of what's already been done. You remember, so this is a combination of mitigation that we're, you know, we're acknowledging they've made changes already. Transportation, I sort of, if you go to page seven, because we went through this in detail, you know, we hired. They've relocated the building, so that took a lot of the pressure, you know, off of concern. But we still have some more in here. We note, consult Department of DPW, you know, there they have the jurisdiction over the traffic circle, but if there's any additional pedestrian-friendly things we could do, we mentioned, for example, rectangular rapid flashing beacons, you know. This is all at the discretion of the, of the DPW, but we put it in there.
There's a crosswalk somewhere.
There is, right there, but.
Can it be moved to go closer to the?
Whatever DPW will allow us to do, we'll do it, but it's.
It's their call.
Their call. That's why I put as a condition to consult with the DPW for any additional work that.
Because it would be great.
Yeah. Yeah.
To have a cross thing?
You know, I really think that, you know, the traffic situation, you know, we're leaving this all up to DPW, we don't know what they're going to agree to or not agree to in the future, and that does concern me.
But they did sign off on.
Give them some guidance, Tom, is that what you're saying, or make recommendations to them?
But Tom, the DPW did sign off on the plan, we, we want them to do more in terms of pedestrian safety, in terms of crossing Flanders Road. Flanders Road over the last few weeks has not been.
Lot of accidents there.
Yeah, a lot of accidents, unfortunately, regarding pedestrians and we're, if they say, if they allow us to do the flashing pedestrian crossing light, we'll certainly do it, but we can't tell the county what to do.
The DPW also, I coordinated all this with the DPW twice, as a matter of fact, didn't get any comments from them. Should be understood that this will go before the DPW when we do our formal application. Right now, we're doing this all based on the ZBA application, so DPW doesn't get, you know, referred, you know, other than the secret documents.
And maybe this is a good time, or when we get to the end, if this, if we approve this, where does this go from here?
Back to the zoning board where they got to finish up.
They've held off.
Going back to zoning board, still going back to DPW.
Well, then they got to come to us with the formal application.
Site plans.
We don't have a formal application yet.
Site plan application, we have not submitted that yet.
It's a secret.
So we're not done with looking at this, Tom.
Just want to make sure I fully understand and other people, because we all know this has been, you know, a lot of people have expressed a lot of concern about this.
I'm, I'm going to get to that.
Okay, okay.
I was at that meeting. So, and, and trash pickup during off-peak hours, early morning hours would be best. Impacts on human health.
What about oil delivery?
Fuel?
You know, I, I, I just don't purport to know how the industry works. I don't know, I don't know that we could limit oil truck deliveries through a gas station.
We talked about, we talked about the oil delivery trucks coming in the other road, not coming in Flanders. We had a discussion about that when we were discussing all of this any number of times, that that would be the better street to come in.
We just don't want the trucks being diverted going through residential neighborhood in order to accommodate going.
Well, it only comes down one tiny little piece, that's all, do you know what I'm talking about?
I mean, the reality is you can't control how they come in.
No.
No, no matter what we say.
Especially at four AM.
The guy in the truck is going.
Yeah, exactly, we had talked about that, because we talked about circulation within the parking, within, around the pumps itself.
There was a lot of conversation about that, that may have been the earlier floor, floor plan, I, so, but I'm remembering.
Blow it up, Anthony, a little bit, yeah, so it would be coming in that.
If they came up from East, from Hampton Bays and making a left into the site, or they would come up from, I can't see the street.
They'd come around the circle.
They could come around the circle from any other direction, we, we can't control that, we cannot tell the oil delivery company, you have to follow this.
Wherever their last delivery was, that's where they're coming from.
That's correct.
Well, we could also, say it's a preference. You know how some people have service delivery signs?
Yeah, a hundred percent, you know, the other side of it is, you know, we're imposing some conditions here, you know, some good ones, the, the planning board's also still going to review this and we, and we can still impose as conditions of site plan approval, by the way, we're not losing anything, so if there's going to be, you know, lightings.
It's going to go to the ZBA if this gets approved today, they're going to make their final.
Decision on the variances.
Decisions, and then it will come back to the planning board for further review.
If I have my view correct.
Right.
With fully, you know.
Engineer plans.
Plans and all the rest of it.
So they had something like eighteen variances to begin with, if I remember?
Yeah, there was a lot of them, I don't know how many there are now, because during the discussions, they eliminated some other ones, but, you know.
Quite, we eliminated more than half.
Okay, so it would be, it would be important, I think, to understand what's, what, what's left, what are the variances, what variances are you there for?
It's.
You said signage? You said?
It must be signage, I'm trying to find a chart.
Parking, because parking on this, the building is right up to the road there, so what happens is any parking that's within the required front yard setback, it needs variances, but it's, it's, it's an existing condition, it's a product of the building being situated so close to the road, that any parking up here requires a variance for a setback, so.
Is there enough space up there to park?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have the chart, Anthony? I have it in front of me, so.
Okay, so parking?
The distance from the Conic River is supposed to be five hundred feet, we're at three hundred and twenty, we can't change that. Parking in the front yard, there are.
Front yard of the seven eleven store?
No, in front of the gasoline station, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight parking stalls, I believe it is, along Flanders Road. And I'm going, I'm going to address that in a moment, Jackie, you, because I want to, we're going to get to a section, I'm going to present all of this as a summary.
Okay.
But going on, and the reason why I'm hesitating, I'm going through, variances removed, variances removed, variance removed, variance removed, number of parking spaces required, we are proposing thirty-six parking spaces where fifty-five are required.
That was originally, though.
Okay.
So you need a variance on that?
It's in magnitude, it's been reduced, so the current calculation is for thirty-six required and thirty-one provided, so we're seeking for a variance for parking.
Okay, so parking.
Not that this is an ideal situation, but it's the reality of a gas station, but a convenience store, that doesn't account for the cars that are going to sit there, gas up and then go into, you know what I mean?
Correct.
It's not a great situation, but it, that happens at the gas station.
Is it a variance or is that a waiver? Which, which one?
The parking.
I think it was a variance, to be honest. I don't know, Dennis, that's a good question, I'll, I'll look at that.
Okay, and it's always come across the table as a waiver.
Well, particularly if we have cross access between, are we going to have cross access between the seven eleven?
Well, there is, because, you know, they're going to operate together.
So question mark that. What else?
So the impacts on human health, you know, again, we.
Excuse me, Anthony, I'm sorry, I want to go back, because I think I missed this on transportation, the first bullet point says traffic counts were found to be acceptable with an acceptable growth rate of two point seven five percent per year. I would disagree that two point seven five percent traffic growth a year is acceptable.
Again, we would have to rely on what the DOT and DPW tell us and these, and our traffic engineer, AKR, if all four of them say, this is what it is, Tom, I don't know, how do we argue against four different agencies or, you know, individuals?
Go look at Flanders Road, go look at County Road thirty-nine, that's my argument against, and those were one point nine, one and a half to two percent annual growth, two point seven five.
I understand, Tom, but again, we can only do so much, and if the agencies are responsible, tell us that's what the number is, can't tell them otherwise.
I just, I don't find it acceptable.
I understand. This also came out of our traffic consultant, reviewed this and made, you know, statements that were within final documents and everything, so this doesn't come from my analysis.
The word acceptable, they may have used, I'm just saying, I would not use the word acceptable.
No, and I, I, I don't, I don't know that, you know, anybody would disagree with the fact that the traffic situation over there is just bad in general.
It's acceptable time, I should say acknowledged by the following agencies.
Yes, I would say that.
I think it depends upon what you think is acceptable.
No, sure.
It's bumping to bump a traffic and accidents acceptable, so then it's.
So you just say acknowledged by the New York State Department of Transportation, Suffolk County DPW, as affirmed by the applicant's engineer and town consultant.
Right, okay.
So we're changing that wording, Anthony?
We're going to add that in there.
Well, I bet in there. And take away the word acceptable, but add the language from all of the parties I just mentioned.
Then at the top of page eight, relating to, you know, impacts on human health, again, the additional conditions in here that we've already discussed, the project changes and incorporation from the Pine Barrens, consistency with the community plans, actually, that whole discussion there comes out, because that was all pertaining to the original variances of which they don't need anymore.
Where are you, Anthony?
Oh, I'm sorry, page eight.
Page eight, it says consistency with community plan and impact on community character. We're going to strike.
Yeah, that gets, because it says, you know, the lot area shall not be less than forty thousand, the lot area sufficient access facilities.
So that all goes away?
That, that all goes away, but.
But I think we have to mention the, the study, the Flanders Road study, you know?
Which?
That the, the seven eleven building on another lot works better with the Flanders
It applies with the intent and of the Riverside overlay district. I'll look at, just touch on that somewhat, because the applicant has gone really above and beyond in trying to address the concerns by yourself, the community, the outside agencies, the Pine Barrens Commission, and since the last plan you saw, to say we've mitigated it, we've even mitigated it since you've last seen it, or we pushed the gasoline tanks farther away from Flanders Road to twenty-eight feet as opposed to eighteen feet. We were at sixty-nine percent maximum impervious coverage, we're now down to sixty-three percent to comply with the standard of the Pine Barrens Commission. We reduced the number of variances by more than half. What's interesting, about thirty-nine Flanders Road, that, that's interesting, because that's a bit of history, and I want, it's an important part to be included in the record. That property, where the existing building exists, that was actually approved by this planning board on September eighteenth, two thousand and eight, Larry Toler signed the, the site plan.
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, and it was for a three thousand, three hundred and ninety-six square foot commercial building. Our building is only three thousand and ten feet, so we're taking what the planning board previously approved and made it smaller, we're pulling it back away from the road to add more landscaping, and all the parking that you see today that was approved by the planning board is going to be ripped out, and that's where the IA system is going to go, so you're going to have, one, you have the building footprint and that's it, no parking, it's got, the rest is going to be revegetation, subject to your review and approval. So we really not only included this building, got rid of the accessory use issue, it's permitted use in the VB's district and the impervious coverage has been substantially reduced above what's allowed by the commission and the town, so I think that shows that the process.
We got some good results.
And so I think it was a big plus.
It took us a long time.
Jeff, have, has anybody met with the community since the last time you guys were here?
We have been invited and we're, we're on the agenda for November.
Okay, good, okay, good.
So on page nine there.
So I do think, Anthony, just some reference to awareness of the Flanders redevelopment plan for community character.
I think we brought it more into compliance with the purpose and intent.
Yeah.
On page nine there, it's, you know, even though we struck out the other stuff, I do note that the planning board, you know, the project may have potentially large impacts, you know, there's still zoning relief and, you know, concerns about lighting associated with a twenty-four hour convenience for our gas station, so I think that still remains, you know, legitimate concern.
Subject to site plan review and compliance with your dark sky ordinance, and we're committed to that.
So you're taking out this.
Correct.
Second bullet, those three, three things?
Yes, but I'm going to keep in the rest of, you know, on, on page nine there, the rest of it.
The summary of negative conditions.
Because you'll see, I also note on page nine there, we're still going to, you know, we have some of the standard conditions, the clearing, I did add just a note, stricken here into the town's lighting code to be dark, sky compliant, subject to review and approval by the planning board, obviously, at the time of formal, no use of blue lights that are evident of the seven eleven store locations, that we go there, we see that they're sitting up on big poles, you don't know what they are, but we've got complaints about them, so we'll make that a condition, this is no lighting.
So we don't know what the, because, yeah, you see them now, we don't know what they do, or?
I'm sorry, the which?
There's blue flashing lights that are, I know the one down the road has them, one down Flanders Road has them.
Is it on the, inside the building, or is it?
No, no. No, it's down in the parking lot.
You know what that is, Tom? It's a security camera system.
Security cam.
That's what we were told, yeah, because that was a frequently robbed seven eleven, so they put.
If you go out to Walmart in Riverhead, you'll see one in the parking lot there. It's, it's a safety measure, unfortunately. It looks odd, but it's needed, unfortunately.
Okay.
We could think of better ways, I think.
Yeah, it's like a UFO up there.
Exactly.
So, and I also included there, another one here, reduce the amount of signage from what was originally submitted to the ZBA by, and they've already agreed to this, eliminating the welcome to Riverside component to the street, because we're going to do that separately and we'll do that with long range planning.
So you want to take nine out?
No, no, we're going to keep that, and then to reduce the number of canopy signs to two, Jeff, did, you guys put something on the record with the ZBA, but I don't remember what it was.
Yeah, I, I don't, I forget if it was two or three that still exist, because we want, we'd like to have one per street fundage, and we actually have, one come from the circle and then one on Flanders Road and then one from the other road as well, so it's, it's up to the ZBA if.
No, it is, they're going to be relying on the planning board, I mean, what's the planning board thought on it?
And we reduce the size of, of those, the signs on there, and one thing you don't see, if you remember the old seven eleven days with the racing stripes around the canopy, you're not going to see that.
Oh, that's, that's not on there? Okay, that's good, because you see that everywhere.
Yes.
You know, I don't know how this board feels, I mean, one on the, it is, you know, you have the road that goes all the way around, so I, I'm going to leave it to them, I don't have a.
Are you addressing the West Hampton, I think, the West Hampton project, West Hampton seven eleven.
Do they have the racing stripes?
No.
Yeah.
So.
Same thing with Hampton Bays.
What do you think, what, what about the, the?
Are the canopies, are the canopies for purposes of the address?
Clear handle.
Are the canopies?
Yes.
For purposes of the address?
The signage is being addressed through the zoning board and then you'll see them come back through the site plan with you.
One of the colors out, I think.
The canopies over the gap.
Reduce the number of colors, unfortunately, one of the colors, I hate to say unfortunately, if the canopy is white, that counts as a color.
That's true.
Okay.
Even though.
So you're allowed, what, two more, three max?
I thought it was an absence of color, it was white.
It's either two or three more, and that's the discussion we're having with the zoning board now.
You made that determination.
So what are we talking, we're talking about a seven eleven corporate logo, which is orange, green and white, right?
On the gasoline canopy.
You're talking about on the.
It just says here, reduce them up, that there's a can, there's a seven eleven sign on three sides of the canopy, facing each of the, you know, roadways, one, you know, that, that, you know. So I said, we said go down to two, they would like to keep three because the three signs face all of each of the, you know, roadways that, you know, surround this property.
I think it's awfully hard for us to make a decision without seeing something in front of us, but this is a visual issue. Does anybody have something?
It's, Keith is telling me it's green, orange and red, I apologize.
Excuse me, we have Nick Buscemi raising the hands on Zoom.
Oh, we have people on that Zoom, yeah.
See if they can put up the elevation of the canopy.
One thing, if, if Nick Buscemi is on the Zoom, I don't know if he is, Anthony, he has the copy of the latest site plan, they can show the plan to the board. If Nick is on the call, if you could just post it up on this.
Yeah, he's, he's coming in now.
Also, Anthony, your microphone.
Better?
Much better, thank you.
All right, everybody see and hear me?
Yes.
Just quickly for the record, Nicholas Bouchemi from High Point Engineering, office located at 1860 Wallerwood Road, Melville, New York, Suite 600. I believe I should have the ability to share. I see we're talking about the colors of the canopy. So I'm just going to pull this up. Is everybody able to see the screen that I'm sharing? So this is, this is what the canopy elevations look like. So this is a white background. I know it looks gray, but otherwise you just wouldn't see it on the background of the paper. So this would be a white with the orange, red and green.
So they consider the whites an additional color, so they're over the number of colors.
So you have it in the center.
It doesn't matter what color the background is, is considered to be a color.
Yeah, yeah, I buy that.
So they have three of those, Jackie, on the canopy.
Correct.
So the front, two sides.
And the front, yeah. They're, right, one facing the circle and one on each of the roads.
So I'll highlight them for you if that makes it easier, so we got.
Those be in the end, they're not in the center, right?
Yeah, we're highlighting them.
Yeah, at the end, right.
This might be easier to see.
They're relatively small, are they not?
They are.
Yeah, they don't need any relief or anything, so I was just asking, you know, if, do we want to, are we okay with the three? And if so, then I could just eliminate that.
I think if they're, if they're small on the end.
That's it.
You know, these horsey signs, I think that works.
Again, we, we've taken all the.
I don't know how many people expect to come in that other road. What's the name of that other road?
Riverly.
Riverly, I think a lot of people.
A lot of people would come.
Yeah, you come up that way from West Hampton.
Well, then I think a sign there would be useful, practical.
That's, that's fine. So I'll, I'll remove that Jeff from, from this one here, but we'll keep the, the, eliminating the welcome to Riverhead. Yep.
But that's going to be.
Riverside.
Anthony, that's going to be a nice sign, right, within the foliage?
Right in that green area.
Do you have an example of that? Do they need a ZBA variance for that, no?
We don't know actually, so you know, we, we'll, we'll deal with it. But it's, since it is going to be a town-related thing. But they do need a variance for it now as it's currently proposed.
Can he show it to us?
Yeah, can you zoom in to the bottom right there? It's like the one in West Hampton, I think.
Correct.
Correct, so if we remove the welcome to Riverside sign, that would bring us down to 32 square feet, which would make it code compliant.
Now, this is the welcome sign?
Well, yeah, that's, and that's why when they said they would do that, I said let them reduce the sign, eliminate the variance.
And we, we took it away.
And we will.
Right, so this would go.
Make a nice sign.
With them for a sign that says welcome.
Oh, yeah, I mean a full sign.
It's part of a larger town-related sort of administration.
The community would like to see that.
So, so, so that's, that's going to go and we are going to get, so we'll do it through our site plan by the way.
And what is that on the right side of the sign? What is that?
The price.
The prices.
This is the price signs.
And this will mimic exactly what you approved for the one in Hampton Bays.
And West Hampton.
Yeah.
The one in Hampton Bays is on a nice stone.
Yes.
That is still.
Yeah.
Well, you're not doing that, right?
Well, we're not Hampton Bays, so we wanted to reflect the character of Riverside, but guess what? We're coming back for site plan review.
Right, because those signs are very handsome.
They're getting it for size or color, whatever it is, we could use those parameters and get whatever.
So Jeff should just be aware of it.
And maybe to make it flexible than Monument or, because that's a pool sign, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the monument signs are really nice.
Like they are, stone, you know, like a gray stone or something.
Yeah. We had, we had the actual photographs of it.
Yeah.
Do you remember?
George had taken.
We had photographs of it.
George, the west, went in West Hampton. He took pictures.
That's something we can definitely work with you on, finish site plan review, so. Well, we could get the sign designed, you know, like I said, the ZBA is really looking at, on that one, they're eliminating the size actually. So I don't know that the ZBA is looking at anything on that one at this point, so we won't be bound.
They were, okay.
They were previously.
As long as ZBA doesn't issue ultimatum and we have to work with that.
And, and then public controversy, environmental impact, let me read this. The project is in subject of some different public controversies evident by the public comments received at public hearings and during the rate comment period by both the planning and zoning board. The opposition is displeased with the addition of another convenience store in the community, which they believe is perceived by many to create negative public perception. Due to a combination of factors related to crime, community impact, quality of products, potential traffic impacts. The planning board acknowledges the community concern that finds significant project changes have been made, that along with the conditions of negative, the conditions of the declaration discussed herein, effectively mitigate any potential significant environmental impact. You know, look, here, I was at this meeting, I've been to all these meetings, the, the public is very clear. They don't want to see this project with a 7-11 period, end of story. And that's the reality, at the zoning board meeting, like for, for my part and to do the planning board, I advised them that, in fact, we have not just rushed anything through, that we've been spending four or five years at this point and that we're going to get the best proj, project out of this. It may not be ideal and, you know, but it is going to be the best project we get and we made significant changes, you know. So I would like to add to that though, so we could address it. The planning board notes that additional concerns such as lighting, landscaping, buffering, will continue to be addressed during the site plan review. Because I don't want anybody reading this thinking that the public has been dismissed completely. This is just a step along the journey. So I should.
Right, and that there will be further review to, but I think you need to state that. Because again, I don't think people fully understand.
And further public input. And, and quite frankly, if the zoning is met, our hands are tied to addressing the things you're saying.
So, you know, I did advise the public, because a lot of them said at the thing, planning board, it has too many 7-11s. You don't need to approve another 7-11. I, I did have to advise that if it's permitted use, you can't say, you know, you could have, you know, Halsey's convenience store, but not 7-11 convenience store. We just can't do that.
Anthony, we had a discussion at the agenda meeting, because I asked you this, I thought, what about a, a small supermarket there? To find out that the gas station and the 7-11 are one package, that 7-11 and a gas station go hand in hand, is that it? I mean, 7-11 is making the application? What's?
There is a 7-11 application.
It's a 7-11 application, okay. Because how great it would have been, I don't know how many square feet on that building, how many?
3,030.
3,100 square feet. We have a market in Hampton Bays that is robust and really services the community.
Oh, no worries.
I don't know, the, the, the best avocados, what's the name of that one? Well, they have a parking issue.
Yeah, I, I work on that site. It was where Liggett's was.
It's where Liggett's was. I don't know the square footage of that.
David's the CFO yet?
I don't think so.
Is that, that, is it?
I'm aware of everything on that.
Is it, Anthony, is it more than 3,000?
Yeah, that's a 7,500 square feet.
So it's double.
That's why they went at various stages as they increased to a special exception.
So this is only three, so you're really limited. But again, it's a 7-11 stamp and I understand what the community would be opposed, but, and I, and I never realized that it was a 7-11 application.
Does 7-11 accept SNAP benefits? Because then there would be some kind of stocking requirements for certain household staples versus just convenience or like junk food.
That, that's a corporate decision, I'm not involved with that.
Right.
If SNAP survives.
And this is a good conversation, maybe this is something that doesn't really directly fall within what we're authorized to do, I don't think. I think this is a good conversation we should be having with.
The community.
Community and, no, Jeff, you don't work for 7-11, but.
You're having another session with the community?
We're having our first session with the community next month.
And I will say Anthony and I are tentatively scheduled and it may not work with your schedule or their schedule, but we were going to go talk to Frank about the role of the planning board in applications in general and what we are, how we work and how, what we're empowered to do.
What we can do and what we can't do.
What we can't do. And it's similar to a presentation we gave last year in Hampton Bays, which was very well received. And I think the Franca folks.
Education.
Because people see us as rubber stamp, rubber stamping things that they don't want. And we don't have the ability or the authority to say no if it's in the zoning code.
Which is what the public said, but you know, again, as I said to the, to the public and to the zoning board, after four and a half, five years, the planning board rubber stamped nothing. Nothing is rubber stamped here.
Just so you know.
Thank you, Anthony.
You know, I mean, that's the reality and then, and so this, again, is not the ideal situation. Nothing is ideal in the traffic, on the traffic circle there.
No, but if you have a pipeline to 7-11, there's a 7-11 down the road. And when they first went in, they had fresh fruits. They had fruits on the outside, they had firewood, they had a bunch of things.
Yep.
That took it out of the 7-11's.
And we proposed the same thing.
Antiseptic mo, model.
Yep. And we're proposing the same thing.
Right.
Fresh fruit and vegetables and, you know, I mean, that would be a great thing to see, real, real food.
But just think, for anybody who thinks that we're fast-tracking this, I had forgotten this. When I had to revise the EAF Part 1, I forgot that I had written the original one. The reason why I forgot was it was four years ago. So there, there is no fast-tracking of this application, so. Anybody thinks that the planning board is steamrolling this or we're.
Rubber stamping.
Absolutely not. The planning board, you have to consider, consider staff's recommendation, all the outside agency considerations, all of the internal, internal agencies considerations, the public consideration. You have to take in a huge amount of information on every single application to come up with a decision. So anybody who says that you're making a snapshot, I take exception to that. As a planner, you do a tremendous amount of work and sometimes applicants like to think things move a little bit quicker. It's a process.
Right.
And my belief, and I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe this, I think a better product comes out of it as a result of the process.
That's right. But there's no doubt that hopefully this Flanders study will suggest in a strong way that that area needs a supermarket.
We've been trying for that, I, I start, I came in this room in May of 1998 and I've been trying to get a supermarket since then. And I talked to Tom Cullen, talked to Shopright, talked to all the, and.
Well, it's a thriving community, it's a growing community and people need food.
Tried to get Trader Joe's at Flying Point Road.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, hopefully the revitalization plan will kickstart something.
Something.
Right. The revitalization plan?
Yeah.
Which has been, you know, starting to move along again.
I get frustrated because I did the, I don't know, I think it's the first revitalization plan back in 98, 99, 2000. And that just got shelved and so hopefully this one doesn't get shelved. I understand this being looked at again, revised, whatever, so.
No, it's, they've got the funding, it's tangible.
It's moving forward, I can tell you that.
They got the funding for the sewage treatment plant and everything.
Treatment plant is start, is.
That will make a huge difference.
That's the.
And we have a whole plan surrounding that about who gets what.
Yeah, exactly. Without that, nothing, everything else will sit on the shelf.
And the committee has to remember, the town's on all those lots in that industrial subdivision, so. The town's. The board sees here, bottom of page nine and on page 10, I actually put in red, all the, resummarize all the additional conditions, so.
It should have been red, orange and green.
So again, I'll just read in compliance with the recommendations for the environmental assessment prepared by Vertex Company, dated February 3rd, 2021. A submission and approval of a revegetation plan to demonstrate compliance with the club standard 5.3.3.6.1 at the maximum layer of 25%. Protection of existing vegetation to be included in the landscaping plan, here due to improve by the planning board at the time of formal site plan. Including noted large trees on site. Increase the setback of the fuel storage tank, an additional 10 feet to 28 feet from Flanders Road to maximize the setbacks to the Pecan River. Decrease the amount of impervious surface to the maximum extent of traffic flow. A landscaping plan to limit plantings to 15% fertilized vegetation. Strict adherence to the town's lighting code, I can just say, you know, article, sky.
Dark sky.
Eight, no use of the blue lights that are evident in other 7-11 convenience stores. Can we eliminate that one? Because if this is a safety issue that we need a blue light, I hate to reduce the potential that we need a, a safety issue.
Oh, I know. They're just not permitted by.
No blue lights at all?
Not flashing blue lights now.
Wow.
Come to, you know, come in to discuss safety.
You can come and discuss safety, we can put lights on your building.
Yeah.
How do they get, how does the other one get away?
More lights in the parking lot. 7-11 down the road on Flanders.
More shadows, more opportunities for people to hide out.
The, where they do have the blue lights, they have been given violations?
Yes.
Okay, good to know.
Notice that they're on wheels.
Change the code.
I mean, when you come in, if you need, come in with something that's not a blue light. I'm sure there's a security thing that we, that's not a.
They're up on a pit pole.
30 feet in the air, you know.
Pit pole.
Number nine, reduce the amount of signage from what was originally submitted by eliminating the welcome to Riverside. The rest of that's coming out. 10 is about consulting DPW for any additional pedestrian work that could be done in conjunction with their requirements. Who knows, they may come back with stuff upon a formal withdrawal at the time of site plan where they tell us, here's what we're going to expect from the code.
And then what's our response to that?
Usually we incorporate them into our site plan. You know, the site plans are usually designed, like the ones we just did for Ashley Kaprow, the, the DPW or the DOT said you got to put the sidewalks in. So the site plans then get revised to reflect whatever work they're requiring. Typical, a trash pickup to run off Pete Avenue.
Anything more on the traffic, Tom?
Well, I think.
It seems, it seems so.
You know, we spent, you know, the great portion of this project was.
Traffic study.
Traffic study. It went through the numbers, our consultant revised, it went through, they revised. You know, it, it, it wasn't an ideal situation, I think we got that discussion out of there. You know, absent, you know, trying to get the convenience store located as far away from, you know, the entrance and exit points and, you know, I, I don't really know what more we could do for this. I'm talking about traffic circle, you know what I mean? I mean, it just, you know.
We can just make a comment that the traffic safety on that road needs to be looked at by Suffolk County. Because, well, whatever language.
That's, that's, you know, and that's the issue and I'm still, you know, concerned about the traffic. We don't have the control over, you know, what goes on, on that road outside of our jurisdiction. You know, Jeff's right and Anthony's right, you know, DPW and the state DOT control both the roads adjoining it and the roundabout, the traffic circle that's there. You know, the fact that we get another crack at this is, you know, probably the only reason I would vote to allow it to go forward today. Because I don't know what can be done to address those concerns, but I've been up there a lot recently. The congestion is really bad. And I understand, you know, traffic engineers, that, you know, things can be mitigated, things are acceptable or not acceptable. You know, but when you have to deal with them and you have to live there, you know, it's a very serious issue.
Right, I mean, and, you know, and the feed in that traffic circle is very dangerous. It's poorly marked. You get in it and you think, oh my God, because there's so many exit points.
Right, there was originally supposed to be a four-legged roundabout that was not acceptable, so it's a five-legged roundabout. Which inherently makes it more.
Makes it more dangerous.
People, we were talking about Riverly Avenue, you know, the people on Riverly Avenue are very upset about the truck traffic on Riverly Avenue. They want to talk to the town board about, you know, truck restrictions on Riverly. You know, there's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
Yes, traffic, from a traffic standpoint, for sure.
I mean, the, the way I deal with it is I do not ever use that traffic circle. I, I've come up with other ways to get where I need to go in Riverhead.
Right.
Tom, just a question, because really a, a part of what you're talking about is the increased traffic and kind of how cars are moving around, but then also people, right? So is there a way to incorporate a pedestrian movement study? Maybe there's some sort of urban engineer? Because when you put the 7-11 there, it creates a better situation, but then it also creates a situation where people may want to cross over the street. And maybe there is some other crosswalk opportunity, you know.
But that's what we talked about.
I mean, I'm glad you reminded us.
Crosswalk.
We talked about crosswalk to the 7-11.
To the 7-11 directly.
The other side. How do you do that with a flashing light?
Talking about right around the circle.
Right up at the circle and, you know, a few years ago, the DOT put a crosswalk down by Vale Avenue, a little bit down the road here to try to, you know, help pedestrians there. It's not a mark, I mean, it's a painted crosswalk, but there's nothing, it's not an enhanced crosswalk in terms of flashing.
Right. As opposed to here. So we have, hate to say congestion actually helps pedestrians here because it forces you to slow down. Whereas you get, by where you're talking about, Tom, it starts to open up.
Right.
And people don't want to stop.
Right, and, and there's no, you know, rapid flashing beacons or anything like you see.
That's what we need to hear, just like we have in Bridgehampton.
And I think these are issues, you know, I think I said, you know, it's under DPW and DOT's control. I'd like to see the applicant, you know, perhaps be more proactive and say, we will pay to install.
And I think you're, you're hearing that commitment from us, it's just a question, we don't know what DPW wants or will allow us to do.
So you're just saying, Tom, to make sure that it's flagged in this red text area so that when we're coming back to where we left off, which is this report, that we make sure we address it.
So one, I'll put the statement in there that the, the planning board remains concerned about the potential traffic circulation impacts.
Vehicular and pedestrian.
Yeah, so I think just adding one more point there would be good.
And the applicant has advised that a referral to DPW will be made and additional site plan changes may be required to address these concerns. I mean, I could put something like that.
Somehow, we, the applicant needs to press the county and the state on these.
He does say in there that, that they should have to consult with the DPW on this.
Right.
That's in there, that recommendation's in there.
Are we looking for a crosswalk at the location of the new 7-11 store?
Yes, or by McDonald's.
That's further on Flanders.
DPW will allow it.
I said, when we drive past there regularly and people just cross the middle of the road all the time.
There is a lot of pedestrian traffic up there.
And the opposite side of the road is the McDonald's, a little further down, which adds to another reason people go back.
It has to be coordinated, not just with our site, has to be incorporated in terms of what else is happening up and down the road.
So what Anthony proposed, I think, is a good solution so that we make sure that we follow up and come back to it. And then really we're just moving this to the ZBA to reconsider and we'll see the full site plan and we'll have our reference notes. So I like your point.
And, and we should also, and maybe this has been done already, but, you know, we're talking about the river, the, the Riverhead revitalization action plan. I was a little bit involved with that, you know, when I was here full-time, just a little bit. But I think it's going back to look and see if that plan talks anything about pedestrian crossings. I remember I was involved in the bus shelters, getting, where we were going to cite bus shelters and things like that. But it might be incumbent upon us and, you know, the people that are working on that plan, you know, for the town, to look at, you know, this kind of an idea to see if it's in there. And if it's not, it should be, you know, to help, again, let's help build the pressure to make sure something gets done, you know, for pedestrian safety.[1776.82]
Yep, and we'll definitely look at that through with site plan.
Okay.
So I'm going to add that, I just told them, Jack, and I'm going to add the statement in there that the planning board remains concerned about traffic impact of circulation, vehicular and pedestrian, and the applicant has advised that at the time of formal application, as we're already saying here, they should go to DPW and work with them, that we're going to do a referral, and that additional site plan, you know, design changes may be necessary.
Great, great, that's what we want.
Right.
Yeah, we want another crack at this. I mean, they're not paying attention to that road.
It's, it's a larger issue, I think, in the area, but.
Both the roundabout and the roads, yeah.
I'll add that.
Okay.
They have those conditions as a conditional mandate.
All right, so you'll get us a revised of this, but we're going to vote on this now.
Yeah, you'll vote, and I'll give it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions? This was a good discussion. Jeff, okay? Everybody? Motion to accept by Dennis, second by Tom?
I'm not eager to second it, to be honest with you.
Okay, then, you can vote.
So to be clear, I, I will second it because we're approving a well-produced report to the ZBA with the context that we have a good pathway forward to address issues in site plan, and the conversation resulted that we will have a place to come back to, to address all those issues.
This will continue, yeah.
Okay.
So you're seconding it, Kate? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstention, six in favor, one absent.
And just so the board knows, number 24 on the agenda, which was also 9-11 Flanders, that was for.
Can I, can I change my vote to abstain from this? I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay, one abstention.
Good spot, zero, one.
Five in favor, one abstention, one absent.
So number 24, which was going to be ZBA referral comments, because they submitted obviously a revised plan, I'll, I'm going to go on a limb here and say that our report here is good enough for the ZBA.
Right.
I don't need anything separate beyond our initial one.
Okay, and just attach, attach somewhere the remaining ZBA.
I'm going to add it to this.
Can you?
Yeah, 100 percent, you said.
Yeah, so that's number 14. Anthony, what was that?
That was 24, that was off the agenda.
24.
24.
430.
Okay, I need to get Prenda here because I want to do her stuff because she has to, she has to leave.
She's right there.
I see it.
So number 11, Prenda, you want to do that?
If you do 10.
Townsend, Noack. We're going to go back.
Oh, she was taking that.
I'm taking Prenda, I'm taking this out of order.
Prenda's got to leave.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Stay well.
See you soon. Anthony, if you would adjust the mic to where it's where you're leaning into more.
What did you say, Kate?
Just the mic.
Thank you.
This is number 11, Townsend of Noack Road, yeah.
This is on.
I have.
We have to begin, sorry.
Oh, it's about 4490.
4490?
Yeah, thanks. This is the final subdivision application, it's a minor two-lot subdivision application. 44 Noack, I mean, 4490 Noack Road. It's a one, a little over an acre property in R-15 zoning, and they're proposing, there's existing residents there, they're proposing to maintain that and create a second lot with a flag strip on the west side of the property line. This was, it was a pre-application adopted in February of this year. There wasn't any public interest or any, any comments made. The recommendations were standard, and the board and the conservation board both, given the clearing that, or the pre-clearing that occurred at the back, had recommended some street trees, which are on the map, and they also did a Phase 1A, 1B study.
What did they do to the tree, to the vegetation?
Yeah, I don't know how.
Looks like I had a fire.
Is that, is that the most recent, the 25? Because it doesn't appear like it ever really came back.
No, no.
It's worse than before.
No, I was just curious. Maybe that was an older one. And they did a Phase 1A, 1B, which came back with no findings and no further study. This is a Type 2 action pursuant to secret, so there's no further environmental review. I reviewed the application full, I have a review form, so I think I handed it out, did I?
No, we don't have anything yet.
A review form in there, everything looks to be complete.
Thank you.
And then if the board would like, could have set a hearing in, for the December 11th, or waive it if you choose to.
So when would you want a public hearing?
We have a pencil for December 11th.
December 11th, that's our last and only session in December.
If they waive this public hearing, was there any public interest?
There wasn't, no.
Was there a hearing before?
There was a, there was a hearing, I believe it was in January of this year.
Ah, well, why don't we waive it with a 30-day written comment period?
Okay.
Yeah.
So the resolution is to deem it complete?
To deem it complete, and, yeah.
Okay, and then set a 30-day written comment period.
Yeah, waive, waive the public hearing and.
I'll move it.
Okay, motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose abstentions, thank you. Prenda, you then have number 17, Noel Crestwood, which is a re-veg plan.
Yeah, it's 11 Collings.
11 Collingswood Drive.
So this was first presented to the board for a request for a covenant amendment. Let's see here. There's two resolutions here.
Thank you.
It's an 18,000 square foot lot in the Noel Crestwood subdivision. This is in the APOD, and it's, it would typically fall under 60 percent clearing, but the Noel Crestwoods had 35 percent clearing on, in their covenants. The lot is 100 percent clear, with the exception of some mature trees, or they have a good canopy, but the understory was almost completely clear. So the board wanted to see a revegetation plan, which we have, and we also had a hearing on this back in August, and there was no, no public comments made, and nothing was written either.
So the re-veg is going to bring to the current APOD standard?
It would bring it, yeah, so we, we looked at it, I worked directly with the owner, we looked at, there was, there was really no way they could get back to 35 percent, even if they planted every square inch left over. So they have a plan for reflecting 60 percent clearing, so they'd have to plant back about 7,200 square feet, which is pretty significant. And it's mostly, it's, it's almost exclusively understory, and they'd be connecting the rear yard, which already has some natural vegetation, and, and coming around the bottom of the parcel around to the front, and then also doing an understory alongside the driveway adjacent to the natural vegetation to the north.
Did we amend the covenant yet, or is that a separate act?
No, it'd be two separate actions, so you'd have to amend the covenant to allow them to do 60 percent clearing. Yeah, I have both of them here.
Yes, she has two.
Two, one for being able to amend the covenant.
So the, the logic behind the amending the covenant is that.
Brings the.
Brings it to the current APOD standard, 60 percent.
60 percent.
Instead of 35 percent.
Okay.
Yeah, and our discussion on this, just to, you know, recall, right, Jackie, was that, that these subdivisions were made before the APOD standards, and so we did the public hearing because we wanted to give the community their right to weigh in and say, no, we want to keep it that way, or, okay, let's go bring it to APOD, so I feel comfortable.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, clearly that there's way more house that was built on that property for that small size.
Yeah, that was the original home, the garage came after, but even, even, we looked at it, I looked at it quickly, even with just the house before the garage, 35 percent was, is not a lot.
Yeah, the, the desire of the house owner and the size of the lot and the covenant did not mesh.
Thing put on the entire tract.
Yeah, yeah, because I think it would have been, it was almost 30 percent at the time when it was just the house, the original one.
Okay, so let's amend the covenant. We need a major, a supermajority vote, so somebody makes a motion. Motion by Gloria, and second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose abstentions, we have it, six in favor, one absent. We've done that, and now we're going to approve the re-veg plan, is that it? Or said, no, re-veg plan.
The re-veg plan, yeah, with the, with their.
And you're happy with that?
Yeah, I looked at it pretty closely, Seth took a, a look at it as well, so I got some feedback from Seth, so it's had a very good once-over, it's a good mix of shrubbing grasses for the understory throughout, and with the typical conditions inclusive of as-built surveys and a final inspection, and no COO, I don't know if you're a company that are doing this in order to get an accessory dwelling unit, so we'd be no lease of CO until the final inspection is done on the, on the re-veg.
On the plantings, okay, and you'll fill in this, these blanks that you have.
The blanks?
Resolution number.
Pursuant to the board resolution, blah, 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 blah.
Oh, yes, yes, now that it's, if you're adopting it, I'll, I'll reference the covenant amendment.
Any questions on this?
I'll move it.
Motion by Kate, second by David, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose abstentions, six in favor, and one absent. And then Prenda, you have.
22.
Oh, is that, the Jagger, 149 Jagger path?
Pussonelli.
Oh.
It's down by the flower farm.
Sunflowers.
The flowers.
Right. Pussonelli?
Yeah.
Pussonelli, sunflowers.
Sunflower farm.
This is that, so there's a request to amend the conditional approval of their re-veg plan. So, Tom, remember, this was a site plan that got approved in '22 for the, for the flower farm, which established the flower farms. It's three lots total, but it's, it's all relative to the bulk of the property there. There are a couple of conditions in that approval that called for a 25-foot buffer along the north property line and a 100-foot buffer along the east, as well as a max allowed clearing of 9.6 acres.
We had a lot of discussion on that, a lot.
And that was covenanted, they came before us because when they were preparing the land for farming, they had cleared into both buffers. So we had a, a re-veg plan before you, that got approved in May, it was May 8th. One of the conditions on that approval was that they plant the buffers within six months, do a survey to check it against what the max clearing, if they're still, if they're over the 9.6 acres, because at the time there was a question, they were like right at around 10 acres, and they, they hadn't, they have not started planting yet. Peter, I don't know if Tom is, Pussonelli is online, but he said he would attend.
I don't see Tom.
So they're requesting additional time, or really amending the, the condition, they want to be able to plant in the spring. I was there on Tuesday, I didn't see any evidence of any planting, although off the record, Tom mentioned that they may have transplanted some things when they were clearing the land for the pumpkin patch and the other area, but it looked like the understory's starting to, to grow and fill in, but there's no new trees planted yet.
So you're talking about the, where they went into the buffers, planting there, not the planting of the big field?
No, no, no.
You're talking about the buffers only?
Replanting, revegetating the buffers.
And they just never did anything?
They haven't started it.
And that was six months ago.
That was six months ago, and they had a six-month window, which ends November 8th, and they're asking for more time.
And of course now. Why did they not start planting?
From what I understand, they were, they focused all their efforts on preparing the land and getting, trying to get a first season in of some sort of crop, but I don't know if Tom.
So when is the next best time for planting? It would be the spring, right?
Yeah.
April, May?
The, the entire, so the.
December, January.
The approval, for the full re-veg approval, would give them a year to do the planting typically, but the board wanted to be able to check in at six months.
We kind of gave them this season, as I remember, we said, okay, do what you got to do to, to your, your sunflowers or whatever.
There was also, I thought, conversation that the buffers, they felt were overly restrictive to their agriculture operation, so I'm also wondering if they're asking to modify the buffer size.
I didn't get that impression, I think it, no, I think that would.
They just, they just wanted for the time, timing.
They, they wanted more time, I guess, because they didn't, they never started anything.
But they can't plant now, right?
I mean, if you really stretched it, you could probably plant until November, but I'm no professional.
I mean, I'd be agreeable to.
Especially with the weather changing, you could plant well into.
You can plant now.
Yeah, I've seen people plant through, through November.
We gave them till, you know, May 1st or something, but I'm a little concerned that they're going to come back on May 1st and say, oh, can you give us another season?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, because they have a, there's, it's a one-year with a six-month, so really they could have 18 months total, but that's, we're sort of missing our.
Why don't we extend it for a month?
Yes, and then ask them to come in?
Yeah, ask them to come in.
What's the name again?
Extended for a month.
They have to make it themselves.
So we can understand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So December, it'll, it'll expire November 8th, so we'll extend it to December 8th.
December 1, December 8th, yeah.
And if they want anything more than that, they can come in.
Okay, so you'll reflect that language?
Yeah, I'll, I'll put it in here.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Pose abstentions, six in favor, one absent, so it's from November 8 to December 8. It's been pretty warm. Are you done, Prenda, or do you have more?
No, I was over here, thank you so much for doing that.
You're very welcome. You're very welcome.
Get out of here.
Seth, number 10, sea water, well water.
Bottled water.
Bottled water.
Bottled water.
Here's a pre-app report.
So we've, this was handled by Mr. Dennis Downs. I have put together a pre-app, a draft pre-app report for your consideration. You may recall that this is, involves four, three properties, 4383 Noack Road, 4377, and 4357. There was a merger, it was a lot line modification that's been proposed, merging the two lots that are up against the Sag Harbor Upper Cove there, and a, taking the flagpole portion of this lot I have highlighted and transferring it to this lot here, that is fronting Noack Road. I tried to explain that in a quick summary on the, on the draft pre-app report, it was, I think, took a moment to make it clear where everything was going. At any rate, the benefits of this will be that there'll be less curb cuts, the creation of the lot up against the cove there will be conforming with the R-40 zoning. It would create a 56,359 square foot property. The added benefits would be there are structures in that flagpole that are associated with the, the lot there on the front, pool equipment and such, so it will be taken into, absorbed into that lot as well. The, the applicant submitted a tri-panel for our consideration, so that obviously this was not a cluster plan, or since it's lot line, it's not really minor or major review either. The conformance with zoning, as mentioned, we're going to be making a more conforming lot out of the two lots that were up against the water there. I can say that there were, this was created by a subdivision known as Minnie Schwartz and Fred Hager back in '76. It should be pointed out that there were, there was to be no further subdivision or modification to said four parcels as approved, and as approved by the planning board, unless it was annulled or waived or changed or modified by the planning board, so, just to, just to make that clear. I should also go on to, to note that in two thousand and three, there was a variance that was granted, uh, and this is really why we're at this point right now. That decision said that the four lots were merged in error to re- and are to revert to a single and separate status with the R twenty setback. Uh, this is subject to the two waterfronts lots being merged into one lot with the flag to the waiver, uh, to the water, excuse me, over the Eastley side of the proposed lot and a common driveway for the waterfront lot on the Westerly Road front lot. So again, that, uh, flagpole will be taken into, uh, that front lot there that I have, I'm waving. And this will, flag here will serve the merge lot in the back. So this is finally really being effectuated by the applicant. It was asked for back in two thousand and three. And he's, uh, moving ahead with finally getting this done. In terms of the referrals that were, uh, received, uh, importantly, the DEC did point out, uh, that they're, they're going to require, title wetland, uh, permits per the Title Wetland Act. So that is, uh, something we need to consider. And, uh, that would, it's actually two different permits that would be required. Then moving on to the fire prevention, uh, there was nothing out of the ordinary. These are the standard, uh, recommendations. Similarly, the Department of Health Services, they did point out that they received a subdivision wastewater application, uh, back in two thousand and three and that it was finalized in two thousand and six. They maintain jurisdiction over the final approval for this application. And Planning Commission, they had no, uh, left it for our de- local determination, that is. And then, so the recommendations that I had proposed to the board to consider were that, uh, any construction on the proposed lot three will require a wetlands permit, uh, as, and that the planning board can move forward with a two ninety-two thirty-nine B, uh, referral. If, if that's, uh, if, if the applicant requests that.
When were the wetlands flagged last?
Uh, that, that I'm not sure of. I, there is no record of a, of a wetland flagging on this, so I, I don't have.
Well, we make reference to it, so we need something.
I do have a, uh, covenanted buffer to the wetlands. Um, I mean, it being, it's, it's in the, uh.
Well, they're not proposing any regulated activity.
No.
No, they, they'd have to flag it.
Just merging the land.
They'd, they'd have to, yeah, they'd have to flag it before they.
Yes.
They build anything.
Right. And then they get a current flag.
So that should be the recommendation is if, if any proposed, proposed building is to take place on the merge lot, a flagging will be.
Yeah.
You've said it, yeah.
Uh, again, the, the New York, uh, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation requires, uh, two, two title wetland permits that would be necessary before the issuance of any building permits on, on those lots. Furthermore, the Suffolk County Department of Health Services approval is from two thousand and six and will, should be updated or, or, uh, looked at again, as it is probably expired. The subdivision map, uh, shall point out that no clearing would be taking place outside of the, uh, clearing window of December first to February twenty-eighth. And then we have the compliance with the recommendations of fire prevention and the town engineer. So this was a pre-app. This is, uh, maybe a little bit much of a, of a pre-application report. Uh, but I, I do believe there is reason to move on for the, uh, final application and then we can be done.
Okay, good report.
So when they do the final application, though, you'd want the wetlands line?
Yes.
Because you're gonna be approving for three years.
Yes.
There, so you might want to make that a part of the recommendation.
Let the flag take place.
Right. And if the applicant wants to ask you to waive that process, then you would be going to the final step, I would think. Do you understand? Cause usually a lot line modification involves waivers.
Mm-hmm.
There's only one step, you would approve the map. But in this case, because of the wetlands, it's complicated because the process requires, gives you the ability to approve, um, building envelopes for these people to develop the properties in the future.
And you would need a baseline of a vote.
They have the right to do that. But he could come back and ask for the waiver. That's why it's really great to have these people here, but he doesn't seem to want to come. So, um, but I think you, documenting this as a report, he can always come back and ask, you know? But at this point, ask for the, they're going for the final, you'll need the wetlands line, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you'll add that?
Yes, for certain.
Thank you, Claire.
You're welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Claire.
Any questions?
No.
Motion to approve by, uh, Tom, second by Dennis, all in favor?
Aye.
Post-extensions, six in favor, one absent. Uh, Claire, you're doing Teresa's.
Yeah, unless you want to finish yours.
That was it for me. Um, Ted, excuse me, Taniger is, uh, did not, not make a re- didn't get the revenge plan in time.
Okay, so twenty is off?
Taniger, uh, I want to make sure that's the right number.
And the rest is.
Twenty.
The rest is Anthony and you, Claire.
Yes. Okay, so the first one is actually Teresa's.
Yep, Hampton Coffee.
Hampton Coffee. So do you want to pull that for me real quick?
What is the address, I'm sorry?
Yeah, thirty-one Shinnecock Road.
Opened and operating for two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that the same place?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, well, it, it was a farm stand and then it became something else, but I think it still has a CO for a farm stand.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I had breakfast in there like ten years ago.
Yeah.
Well, it was a breakfast place. It became, it was a farm stand, it became breakfast place magically.
Yes.
And then.
But that was like ten years ago.
Yeah, so, um, they rightly came to us for pre-submission process. We forgot the basics to do that. Uh, but it will then go to the zoning board, uh, sorry, not the zoning board, town board for the change of one non-conforming use to another. If they want to facilitate the farm stand's use to a coffee shop.
It's town board action?
Yes, when they change one non-conforming use to another, it's now a town board action.
The change of use.
The farm stand was non-conforming?
Yes.
And so does it come to us for a referral?
And then it'll come back to you, yes, it'll come to you for a referral.
They had a C E O, they had a C E O for that farm stand.
Farm stand.
C E O there. They're just trying to come into compliance, is that it? They're not changing any.
No, you want to expand it.
They're coming into compliance. Yeah, um, you know, it's, it's cute. It's got, it's been done, but.
Do we have a picture of it?
Um.
Sorry, I was in the wrong Shinnecock, uh, Road.
Oh, yeah.
I was there about a month ago. It's very nice.
Yeah, having a coffee.
It needs a little bit more.
Starbucks shut down and.
Parking. It does have other uses on the property. I think it's got a couple cottages. Um, the use probably needs more parking than a farm stand, yes. Cause it's, it's a, you know, Hampton Coffee is not just a coffee place, it's kind of a restaurant.
Yeah.
Right.
Have you seen, have you seen the C E O for the farm stand? You've seen it?
I've seen it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that?
Great, wanna fill the C E O?
No, no, you don't.
No, just blow up the, the image so we can see.
Shall we start in the back of the property and work, are we?
Okay.
There's lots of stuff going on.
Do they own that, Claire, or do they just lease the front portion?
I don't know. Yeah, who owns it? I don't know who owns it. No, you see, I see that, I'm sorry.
Charles K. Matey's Rev- Revocable Trust.
Uh, yeah, I think the same person has owned it. I've met him in there before.
It's the same, Matey's name.
Oh, okay.
He's, you know, it was Pete's Green Door and then it was the Hamlet and then Hampton Coffee now has taken over the lease and so.
So it's a leased situation?
Yeah, yeah.
It started out as Penny's Farm Stand.
Oh, okay.
Run back from Ham- Pomfokbeach in the sixties. That's where we'd stop and get our corn and tomatoes.
Nice.
Picnic table.
So there's no visual of it.
I have a sign in my office, a picture of it in the office.
Really?
And, um, it looks like a farm stand, but right on the front it says, and you can get breakfast sandwiches and you can.
We buy gold.
That is like the transition of where it came from a farm stand to a, yeah, exactly, so, um.
That's why I have to laugh with Charlie Fox. It's like, you might as well open it. Seventy-five percent of the site plans out here are operating without permits anyway, you know?
Yes, so this.
Don't put down the minutes.
It's probably, yeah, there could not be that much.
Oh, that's what I wanted to see.
Yeah, so this would be Seth's, uh, set pre-submission.
Seth, can you? I just want to see.
Sorry, what would you like to see?
Where are you at?
What it looks like?
Yeah.
Is that it?
That's the, that's the coffee shop, I understand.
Can you enlarge that? Just make that whole, the full screen on top, right? Yeah.
I'm actually gonna take.
Had itself closed in, it's got the plastic sides.
There we go.
That's actually not how it looks right now.
That's how it looks?
That part is open, but then the other side was kind of like a covered porch that was open to the elements that they've actually made a, um, made walls with windows around the whole thing. Um, so where that temporary, you know, covering is, is actually permanent now and the whole place is, you know, better heated and insulated.
It's called fast tracking. Why go through, you're gonna have a site plan. See your referrals, all that, get materials and put it up.
This is also when they goes, these are, this is great because we can look at this, we can see, dig up some plans, pictures, things like that. Um, and we can give advice, uh, because if they have expanded the use, then that's another aspect that the town board has to wrestle with.
Right.
Um, but we can give you them custom guidance in a report. So December eleventh for a pre-submission conference on this one.
Motion. Motion.
I'll move it.
December eleven.
And they would bring in like current pictures or something and like show us?
I think we should go and have.
They'll come in when you say pre-submission, they're gonna come in and talk to us.
Yes, the, um, applicant in this case is, I think.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to pass your house to get there.
Jim, Jim Hume, so he'll be here.
Okay, so motion to, what are we doing? Setting a pre-submission conference for December eleventh? Motion by Dennis, second by Tom, all in favor?
Aye.
Six in favor, one absent. You want to do Charles, Claire?
Yeah, Charles, uh, this is also Teresa's. This is the, um, the office, a medical office building and behind the lunch diner restaurants.
Right, yeah.
Well, a lunch, lunch.
Where Pier One was?
No, no, this is the diner.
Where Pier One was.
The diner.
Behind the diner.
Yeah.
Behind the diner, yeah. And this is incomplete, insufficient information.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion to, motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Post-extensions?
Charles out years ago, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
We got Charlie Fox.
Six in favor.
I also have.
Fox, we did.
Yes.
Code Marina.
Yes, so they have come in for, um, with a modification. They've been sitting incomplete since June of twenty twenty-four.
Aren't they asking for very little and they had done a whole lot?
Yes, yes. And then they asked for a whole lot and I said, no, you should ask for a little. So I had to come back to, let's clean up your site and if you want a trellis, we could work with you for those kinds of.
Haven't they actually?
violations, too, right?
They have violations, they're suing with violations.
Yeah, they've modified stuff, so how, how, how are we handling the modifications?
We doubled their fees. So there's, uh, some aspects that are there and they are not letting go of them, they're not removing them. Uh, that would include along the, um, shoreline, there are some seating, which you can see the seating right now. There's poles and they have canopies over them for people to wait for their boats to come in.
And also they were servicing, uh, a large, large boats and didn't the town board handle that issue? I don't know if they ever came to a conclusion, like a party boat.
The trustees were involved in this, I think, but.
The party boats, yeah.
I guess, I'm, I'm questioning why we're having a public hearing. It, it, do we understand where we stand?
Yes.
And what they're asking for.
Yes.
Yes.
We know that there is.
You want to tell us?
Yes, would you like to know? It is, uh, for fencing. They've replaced their fencing. It's very obvious on the property, so they've replaced their fencing. They are, it is in conformance, uh, but they needed permission from you. Outdoor shower, they've installed. Uh, they put the canopy, which I just described, in posts. They're proposing a dumpster and they're pers- uh, proposing, um, an overhead door.
What about lights?
It's an overhead door.
The lighting, an overhead, like a, um, opening to the building that's like a, like a garage door, put a nicer looking garage.
This is one where the residents were saying there were a lot of other issues coming.
Mm-hmm, right.
That's.
Lighting is more difficult for me to say you've put more lighting up, but we can absolutely look at the lighting to make sure it's conforming and, uh, what you'd want to see.
So this is what they're asking for?
Yes.
So with R ten?
Yes, pre-existing non-conforming use in the zoning jurisdiction.
And we have a regulation that says you can expand, uh, pre-existing non-conforming use by thirty percent, right?
Well, it'd be fifty percent, but what is expansion?
And I thought that was.
Structures?
It was for a, a lo- community marina and have they not changed it to a.
Commercial.
Commercial operation.
A commercial operation.
With very large boats. And where does that stand? Is that, is, am I make, asking a valid question?
Uh, it is a good question. I mean, these are good questions. Um, I have not been told by the, anybody else like they're in violation. The violations issued are for things like this. Violations have not been issued about the operation of the use. I've not seen a violation to that fact.
Should we have them in on a work session?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we should do anything here, right, before we know what's going on. It's deemed site plan wetlands permit complete, so I don't think it's complete.
Yeah, I think we should have them in. We should also find out, have them, you know, talk about the violations. I mean, we've gotten correspondence where the neighbors are upset about a lot. And I was out there, you know, a month ago or six weeks ago or something. It was jam-packed with boats. You know, I mean, they were, I mean, it looked like the busiest car parking lot I've ever seen. They're all wedged in there.
And there's a calculation about how many boats they can, uh, house, right, Claire?
Um, I don't have that information, but we can have them.
But we do have that, right, for boat yards, based on square footage?
Yeah, but this is in the water.
Boats in the water or boats out of the water?
Boats in the water. And I'm not, you know, I'm not a, a mariner, so, but they were.
In the, in the doll, in the, uh, slips?
Yeah, in the slips. And, you know, I mean, there were big boats, there were a lot of little boats.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding of that zoning, that pre-existing i- in a residential area was for a community marina.
Right.
Not, not oversized boats.
Party boats or whatever.
And I, we need, I need an answer to that question. Is this within the pre-existing use that was defined? Which my understanding, maybe not correctly, was little boats for the local community. It's still that you're gonna pay to dock them there, but it's.
They've sort of morphed into a commercial operation and I do think that, I remember Tommy John brought that, uh, discussion up on the town board. I don't know whatever happened to it, but it would be, um.
I heard the trustees talking, you know, re- kind of wrestling with this at a public meeting a month ago or something.
Well, maybe.
Also, for comparison, I was just saying to Gloria, like Southampton Shores, they have like their little community marina that's probably defined in some way by the building department, right? And then you have like spalmons or bigger marinas.
That's, that's actually run by a homeowners association.
But it's still, it would have like a determination, right?
And as opposed to the marina where, um, Captain Jacks is.
Oh, that's another.
That's, that's commercial, but that's it, but that's small boats.
Right. There is a definition somewhere in the code, yeah.
Okay, so you want to table this and ask them to come in for a work session?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you could get some additional information for us about this code and zoning and.
Your trustees have some jurisdiction, that's a town dock, so that's where I think the trustees have some jurisdiction.
Yes. Should we ask the trustees how many boats they're permitted to have?
Tom, the ramp is the town ramp.
Right, right.
But is that marina, um, town?
No, no, the town, no, no, when I say dock, I'm sorry, the mar- the ramp, yeah.
But what's happening is they're using the town ramp.
To launch boats?
To launch boats.
Their boats.
Or, or using it for people to get on their boats.
Uh-huh.
Right, right.
I mean, I've.
That's why the community.
I've kayaked from that area many times, so I'm very familiar with.
The question is about use, right? So wouldn't the building inspector be able to say it's this use versus that use? You know, even if it is operated by a homeowners association or permanent by the trustees? I'm gonna put Mark on the spot today, poor Mark, but we can, we can.
It's okay, the trustees have wrestled with this issue for, uh, for a while and they, they generally were never in the business of regulating the length of, of vessels. They, they couldn't do that. That was outside their jurisdiction. But, uh, the number of spaces and the, and the size of, of the docks, that obviously they could permit.
Okay.
But that's where they used to draw the line.
Okay.
As far as these booze cruises and bigger vessels coming in and launching parties and things like that, that was a separate issue they were looking into.
Just so there's nothing in the code then, or the trustees that.
Well, the trustee's blue book is incorporated and adopted into the town code.
Right.
But, um, uh, there was never anything in there on regulating the length of, of vessels. But there was never anything in there on regulating the length of vessels, that's specifically what you were talking about.
So that code would need to be revised or updated and needed?
They can regulate the length of the dock, et cetera, and, but that's, that was about as far as they go, whether they granted a permit for a certain sized dock or not.
Right.
And then whether it would protrude, you know, a third of the way or more into a waterway, so there's segments on the waterways being navigable, but all this other stuff really wasn't in there.
Part of the problem here is that that's a very narrow channel, and not very deep.
Right.
Okay.
So let's bring him in.
Yeah.
Um, November 13th?
Why not?
Okay, and if it's too crowded on the 13th, we'll make it the 20th. Okay, great, thank you, I'll just table that.
We have two sessions in November 13th and 20th.
20th, yep.
And then because of Thanksgiving.
Yep.
What happened to Charlie Fox?
It was a, it was a-
It was deemed complete, we scheduled a public hearing for November 13th.
Maybe.
Was I here when that happened?
Yeah, we did it very quickly.
Very quickly.
You were here.
Okay, I have another one, that's-
Bridge Petroleum? Oh no, no.
It's back.
Oh my lord.
So-
Zombie application.
It's a new application?
Walking down the street edge.
That's funny.
This is their proposal.
They withdrew the other one.
They withdrew the ZBA application, and this is a new one, starting with a pre-submission again. This is to demolish the existing gas service station.
Completely, pumps and house and building?
And then construct a new gas service station.
They don't have the roads.
No previous ones.
Just keeping it a gas service station though.
Yes.
They showed Montauk Highway on this.
Yeah.
Now or do we wait?
It's a pre-submission, so we don't need much for pre-submission.
Labeling a road, where's Montauk Highway, here Claire, here?
I can do that, I could do that.
They have, they don't have street name, and the side street that goes to that community that is-
Yeah, where the labels of the roads.
Yeah.
You gotta go to the key map, here it is, and down in the key map.
There you go. New York State 270.
Roadways in jurisdictions, right?
This is the side road.
Yeah.
This is County Road 80.
Yeah, I can do that.
We did so much work on this plan.
Did you ever see it?
So now they've given up the convenience store, they're going back to the service station?
Do you remember this, why they, why they withdrew it and then reset it?
Yeah.
I don't remember why they did that.
Until it becomes a convenience store.
Hmm?
Until it becomes a convenience store.
Goes the way of Penny Fox.
They don't need a variance, they're expanding it 50%, up to the 50%, so, but this is, this would be your first look at it. But yeah, I can require them to have that basic information on the property, on the plan, sure.
So it's basically just a gas station now?
And how big is this service station?
The proposed is about 1,700 square feet.
What's 15?
Eleven one is, the existing one's about 1,100.
What's 15.75?
15.75?
It's-
Finished floor area.
Finished floor area.
It's over here.
Yeah, this finished floor, elevation.
Is it?
So the site is 16,300, the building is 1,000, existing 1,182, and they're proposing a 1,728, which is a 46.6% increase, this is pre-existing non-conforming, again, this is-
46% increase.
Yeah, almost a 50% increase.
So what's been doing, leave a mapping?
On the site plan, the basis indicate, the-
Pretty incomplete. I've never seen, I've never seen anything like that.
That's pretty incomplete without the roads.
Relaying the listing now, so you could see it.
Tennessee.
See the enlargement.
See the road.
I'll move to deem it incomplete.
Motion to deem it incomplete by Dennis, second by-
Lacking information.
Lacking information.
Okay, so it's not a completeness thing, it's just lacking the basic information in order to process.
Basic is the editorial component.
Okay, motion by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent. Seventeen is done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anthony, you've got Gateway, American Corp.
Real quick here, I don't do too many of the site disturbances these days.
Stay where you are.
13, the registry, this is Ariel's, this is from 2025, but the tennis court has been removed, driveway has been changed, and they had to do a revegetation basically to bring it back into compliance.
The tennis court was removed?
Wow, wow.
Wow.
You're a tough guy, Anthony, I am impressed.
That was part of their plan, get rid of it, and they provided revegetation plan, including keeping whatever trees were there, which is good, they noted on the plan, and putting in additional, you know, red maple, oaks, tune of 100 and something of them, 150, 2,600, lobulish blueberry, another 95, big blue stem, there's all sorts of stuff going on in here. So in any case, I've spent enough time looking at this, they're revegetating, they've removed the driveway, they removed the tennis court, that was part of their plan, but in the process, the property was just over cleared.
Yeah.
And why did they remove the tennis court?
They were building, you know, a new house and just, you know, they, you know, you know how these things go.
Anthony, so this was part of a subdivision with 10 lots, because this is lot 10, or does that mean it?
That's right, it was, the name of the subdivision was Gateway, yeah.
The registry.
Gateway American Corp.
Gateway American Corp, yeah.
Are you satisfied with the revenge plan?
I'm satisfied with the revegetation plan.
Big win.
Motion by Tom.
Have Seth look at it?
Second by Dennis, all in favor?
He probably started this.
Six in favor, one absent. 319 Brook Hill Road, site disturbance.
Actually, this property is pretty intact, this was approved back in 2019, and it sort of never went any there, they never really did their work, you know, then they went and proceeded with their building permits. They came in after they got the approval, the plan was slightly revised, all the plantings are basically the same, but what they did was, in this back area, started, because it's been since 2019, started to regrow, and they asked because of cost and everything if they could just allow that area to continue to regrow and-
That's revegetation.
And I, that's why it was done in 2019, and if you know, so-
Wait long enough.
I went out there, I got my pictures, I'm okay with it, the plan otherwise is still exactly the same, so I'm just recommending approving the re-vage plan for 319 Brook Hill Road. It's revised only to eliminate the plantings back here and just allow that area to continue to grow.
No supplement, supplemental plantings?
No, that's what they were asking for.
Is this one of those properties that has elevation?
There's some elevation, but this is, you know, this Brook Hill area is, is rolling in general.
And what's regrowing is what was there?
It, you know-
History, you know, 50 years or something.
It's filled in pretty nicely, so, you know, looking at it, I would say it's probably around, probably three or four feet high now that it's started coming up, so I saw it, I said, let them keep it, in my opinion, just let it regrow, but that's up to the board.
I'll move it.
That's APOD, so, you know, all right, motion, we're taking your word for it, Anthony.
Yeah. I guess I better do it.
It's only because it's 520, although we fight with you.
Yeah, motion by Dennis, you've worn us down. Second, I need a second on this.
I've got one more question.
By Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Six in favor, one absent. Okay, you have Teresa's, Claire, 60 Noack Path, Watermill?
Oh, I think he's doing the ZBA referral.
No.
You doing ZBA?
We have 60 Noack Path.
Claire has 60 Noack.
I have my SAGVide, I thought you did 60 already, sorry.
No, we didn't.
Well, let's just do SAGVide and then go quick, you might remember this one, this is up on Middle Line Highway. Well, this is, if you look up there-
It's a cell tower.
Oh, oh, yes, yes.
With the odd property line.
This is the one where the towns negotiated, they're already in contract to purchase with the, you've seen the map, it's-
Yes.
So then before the zoning board, as you know, because they're creating, were you here for this?
Yeah, I was saying it's-
So, just, just real quick, it's, it's a strange form of preservation, it's a strange lot layout, that before the zoning board, this is a conforming five acre piece with a cell tower on there, all this, you know, and they're carving out a cell tower, and then the CPF has contracted to purchase the rest, there before the zoning board, because it's a non-conforming lot, and, you know, there's some setback issues that they're reviewing. You know, we have the referral here, you know, and when it's presented to boards and everything-
I thought you did a good job of articulating our concerns.
So if, if I could just indulge myself and just read it into the record?
Do, read it.
I like the writing.
The planning board is reviewed.
I just patted you on the back.
I appreciate that. You know, our comments to the ZBA is follows, number one, I just say that we have a pending pre-app, and we had a public hearing in September, and we're gonna do a detailed pre-app report, it'll be adopted in November, so they are aware of that, but here's what I say, see, the planning board acknowledges this project is designed to facilitate the preservation of 4.6 acres of land, representing 90% of the subject property, nevertheless, the substandard lot being created to support the existing telecommunications tower is irregularly shaped, undersized, does not support any other potential uses, and will likely impede the potential to expand the existing cell tower without the need for additional zoning relief, creating undersized lots is an unconventional way of preserving land that may establish a precedent whereby property owners of large residentially improved properties seek to create non-conforming lots while receiving payment from the town to preserve land that could otherwise be preserved through other means. To address these concerns, the applicant has stated that the town's acquisition of land will be subject to covenants and restrictions, allowing for the continued use as a telecommunications facility, but not for any other purpose, including residential or any other commercial use. The contract further provides that the town will have the right of first offer with proper notice, if and when the communication tower is no longer a viable option on the subject property, if the property is made available for sale, right of first offer will give the town an option to consider preserving, preservation of parcel two in the future, if appropriate, at the discretion of the town board. If the zoning board of appeals is inclined to grant relief for this project, the planning board recommends narrowly tailoring the approval to site-specific conditions and relief being requested that addresses the unique circumstances of this property, i.e., it's adjacent to existing preserved land, it's near the existing trail system, it's approved with the telecommunications tower, the imposition of covenants, the right of first offer, et cetera, the decision should further justify as part of the town's larger, long-term comprehensive plan demonstrating a legitimate public purpose for creating a subdivision with an unusual layout, the goal is to demonstrate that the approval is not a blueprint for other properties, but a unique opportunity for preservation specific to this site. I don't know what else I could possibly say than that. What do you think, that is?
Bravo.
Bravo, Anthony, well-adulged.
You know, because I think, to be quite honest, I probably shouldn't say this, but I think whatever about the weird configuration, I think it's just a larger philosophical issue I think here, you know what I mean, so we could say it without getting too crazy.
Excellent, thank you.
That was an Academy Award.
There you go.
Bravo.
Anthony, one, one word to add in there.
Yes. Yes, correct, your full title.
Okay, motion to approve is motion by Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
What about 60 Noack Path?
Uh, yeah, um, this is the plan. Very extensive, Teresa reviewed it, so you know, there's gonna be a lot more plans. So, yep.
Looks like a Serat painting.
Great.
Yep, with this, with the standard conditions related to it, so.
There was nothing in the packet, so.
Um, so-
It's APOD, Algric Overlay District, Noack Path and Watermill.
Resolution doesn't have the square footage, does it? I have the square footage, I'd like to just say it.
On here?
Yeah.
Because I've been trying to write down the amount of-
Cleared area, proposed 25,441 square foot.
It's on, it's on here.
25,441.
25,441 square feet?
Total, that would be the resulting cleared area.
That's a cleared area.
Yeah, okay.
And the revenge is-
So we have to back that out at 72,222. You got it, you can-
So that's 25%.
72,222.
Minus 25,441.
Minus 25,441.
Well, that's cut.
That's your re-vage, it's about two-thirds.
72,222.
72,222, minus 25.
35%.
Yeah.
32%.
But that's the square footage if you need it.
That's the amount of clearing they're permitting on the property is 35%, so yep, yep, that's the correct amount.
Five acre.
Yep.
Great, thanks, it looks good. Okay, motion to accept?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, six in favor, one absent.
Okay.
Then we have the town court.
Yeah.
We've already given them a referral on this, so-
You have, you have given them a referral on this, because the original proposal was to-
Didn't have the rotation.
Didn't have a rotation, so they, they have added that back in, where there'll be a rotation, it is still four years.
Mm-hmm.
So do you want to just kind of reiterate your previous comments?
Yep.
On that?
Yes.
And you're still concerned about the longevity, right?
Yeah, all that language that we had.
Yeah, so-
This is a very, also a very complicated, I spoke to Kathleen about it, it's a complicated rotation system, but also we encourage them to eliminate term limits if they're going to be doing this.
Yeah.
I thought there were parallel pieces of legislation.
They didn't, they don't have that now, they, they withdrew that, the term limits.
Right, there's, yeah, I, I heard the brief discussion the board had during their meeting a couple of weeks ago, and yes, they're not doing the term limits, but they're doing the four-year term. There is a public hearing, I think, October 30th.
Right. When you're saying they're not doing term?
There was no reference to any of the guidance that we presented.
I think, I think we should say that we encourage moving forward with the legislation and eliminating term limits.
Does this, if this were adopted, does this restart the clock for appointments?
I don't know. I don't know.
It's very complicated. If you read, you can read in here.
Yeah.
The rotation.
I think we also request a work session with the town board to understand their rationale.
These, these are the rotations.
When a member of the community got up and asked the simple question, why?
Mm-hmm.
It took a minute to answer and, um, one of the board members said, um, so that it would be easier, I believe, to replace uh, members that are not competent.
Hmm, yes, that was.
That was basically the. Answer.
There should be.
It's not a consideration.
Evaluation of that built into any limit, right? I mean.
You know, and I don't, I'm not sure how the town board judges competence would be another question I would have. How they evaluate the competence of a ZBA or planning board member, but.
And I think we gave all the strong legitimate, and I think we should repeat that and encourage them to move forward with the parallel legislation of eliminating term limits. We didn't have that in the last one.
We did.
Did we?
You did. So, um, you had a resolved at the end because you didn't technically review that, cause it was chapter sixty-four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the planning board does support the companion amendments for chapter sixty-four for the reason stated above. It just said you supported that. Um, but we can change that wording to say the planning board continues to support the, um, abolition of the term limits.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Cause then that makes this more doable.
To maintain institutional knowledge and competency of the.
Yeah, I think that's all, that was all our.
Yeah, I just quoted, basically, we quoted the previous legislation from twenty twenty-two. Uh, and that was, that summarized your.
Maybe even put it in bold.
That's to set the public hearing, right?
They said, set the public hearing, the public hearing for this is November twelfth.
Oh, November twelfth. Okay, I thought it was October thirtieth.
Because they don't meet on the eleventh, cause it's a day off.
And we, what we quoted was the June twenty-four, twenty twenty-two legislation that went to re-establish the term of zoning of planning board members from four to seven years. Just the opposite.
Right.
So all of the rationale remains the same. Including, you know, including primarily the recommendation of the New York.
Translation, we're not gonna do any of this. It will all be serving us all over until Tom gets into office.
There you go. Well, I may come and speak at the public hearing. I don't, we'll see how things go.
So this is, so they, they're going to adopt this when?
The public hearing is November twelfth.
Okay, after the election.
Discussed it during a town board meeting, which was kind of somewhat unusual to.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and the last one, um, I had a report, I left it downstairs. So, and it's late, right? So we can just do that on the fourteen, twenty. So I think there's no rush on that one.
Twenty-six is off?
Yeah, and then what I'll do is I'll send you what I've got so that you can take some notes and we can, we can finish it up the next time.
Is that the Rad? Yeah.
That's the, not the Rad, but the Mariner Housing Change of Zone.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By Dennis, second by Tom. All in favor?
Aye.
Code of extensions, we are adjourned.
Mic's off.